Hearing none, this takes us to one of the high points of our meeting. We have a new student member joining us today, who will be our junior member, literally, and also in terms of the fact that our student members don't vote in their first year with the board. So Caleb is advancing to the senior position where he will become a voting member, and Brianna will spend his first year with us, able to fully participate, ask questions, go to any meetings, but she will not have the ability to vote. So I want to welcome Brianna to the board, and I'm going to start with a little paperwork. We need to do the oath of allegiance and the affirmation of office. So let me start with that. Brianna, do you, Brianna Marsh solemnly affirm that you will be true and faithful to the state of Vermont, and that you will not directly or indirectly do anything injurious to the constitution or government thereof under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Next, do you, Brianna Marsh solemnly affirm that you will faithfully execute the office of member of the State Board of Education, and will there and do equal right and justice to all persons to the best of your judgment and ability according to the law under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Great, thank you. Well, welcome. So I know we've got our student report sort of farther in the agenda, so this is a little bit of blurring of the lines, but I thought we might just spend a couple of minutes learning about Brianna and board members, since we are all new to her. Maybe we can just go around. I'll call on people in the order that I see you, and if you could just introduce yourself, where you're from, and, excuse me, sort of how you came to be on the board, like what you sort of do that is relevant to your board position. So Brianna, we'll start with you.
Okay, my name's Brianna Marsh, and I'm a junior at Oxbow High School. And I came to the board because I come from a small school in a small town where we're kind of like out of the loop of everything, and I felt like it'd be a good way to reach out and like see what else is going on and be able to try to make a change.
Great. You live in Newbury, right?
Yes, I live in Newbury.
All right, well, thank you. Okay, no particular order. Lyle, I'll start with you.
Sure, thank you, and welcome, Brianna. Lyle Jupson, Executive Director of the Chamber in Economic Development in Rutland. I was a 30-year educator in public education, most recently Tech Center Director, so have a passion for public education and specifically technical education.
Thanks, Lyle. Brian? I think, Brian, if you're talking, you're muted. Let's go back to Brian. Rich?
Hi, Rich Warner. I live down in Dover, and by Mount Snow. Nobody knows where Dover is, but everybody knows Mount Snow. And I've been on a school board chair since 1990-something, and on our Supervisory Union, and I luckily got appointed to this board a few years ago and find it to be very interesting, and I hope you enjoy it too. And maybe in the future, you'll run a school board up there and take care of your town. Thank you.
Thanks. Brian, we'll give you a try again.
Thanks. Welcome, Brianna. Really excited to have you on the board. I'm Brian Campion. I was in the legislature for 14 years and then was asked to be a part of this great group, which I'm really enjoying. When I was in the legislature, I served on the Education Committee. And in addition to the legislature, I also work at Bennington College.
Thank you, Brian. Cynthia?
Good morning, Brianna. This is Cynthia Stewart. I'm from Concord, Vermont, in Northeast Kingdom. I served on the school board for many years and helped our region go through the Act 46 process of merging a district, merging multiple districts and towns. So feel pretty passionate about education and opportunities for all students in Vermont. And also, I'm new to the board, so I'm on that learning curve that you're going to be on, so I hope you don't feel like you're alone.
Thank you. Tom?
Hi, Brianna. I'm just up the road. I live in Waterford, Vermont, and I was headmaster of St. Johnsbury Academy for 19 years, taught there for 41 years. Currently stepped down from that position and am teaching at Good Shepherd Catholic School in St. Johnsbury. While I was headmaster, I was a chair of a number of independent school organizations. So I think the thing that brought me to the board is my experience with independent schools and specifically the town academies.
Thanks, Tom. Tammy?
Morning, Brianna. We met briefly a few weeks ago, but Tammy, I wear a couple of different hats. I currently am a principal researcher, responsible for a group of individuals at American Institutes of Research, where I lead a group that specializes in education funding and finance and policy research nationwide, who work with a lot of different states, including Vermont. I also have been and still remain affiliated with University of Vermont. I was a professor there for quite a while, and I'm still on the faculty there. So, welcome, and it's great to have you on the board. And I also live in Plainfield, which isn't quite as close as Tom, but you know, we're kind of in the same area. So, and I have been to Oxbow. My daughter is in high school as well, and so we get over there for sports. So next time we're over there, I'm going to look for you.
Thank you, Tammy. Caleb?
So, as well as Tammy, we also met a couple of weeks ago. But my name is Caleb Greenwood. I live in Troy, but I attend Lake Region, so I attend a school out of district. I should be on North Country. This is obviously my second year on the board, and I think the thing that really brought me to the board is just I'm super passionate about student voice, especially considering my school has no student government, not even like a class president for seniors. Like, we really had no student voice. So I think this just was an outlet for my passion for student voice.
Thank you, Caleb. Zoe?
Hi, good morning, Brianna, and welcome to the board. We're excited to have you and for you to share your perspective as a student. I look forward to working with you from in my role at the Agency of Education. We'll be doing a lot of different public engagement strategies over the next several months to ensure that we're really aligning our work to meet the priorities of the field in supporting our schools and students. So look forward to working with you to think there how we can effectively do that in a way that incorporates student voice. Welcome, and we're happy to have you.
Thank you, Zoe. And I think I got everyone except for me. So I will just finish this out. I'm Jennifer. I'm the chair. Just moved to Win Hall last week. Oh, I'm sorry, moved from Win Hall to Manchester last week. So I had to resign my position. I had been the chair of the Win Hall School Board for, oh, several years. And so kind of came into the State Board of Education through that route of being a school board member and chair of the education. And my day job, I have three children, very different learning profiles, basically every volunteer position during their education. And we are getting feed. Hopefully, that's better. It's not. Suzanne, are you able to?
I'm checking. I don't see anybody that is not muted, so it should be better?
Okay.
Okay.
Suzanne, it looks like it's coming from yours, because actually you're the one that's popping up.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, so with that, we'll turn it to public to be heard. If there are any members of the public who wish to address the board, you can raise your hand. And we ask members of the public to limit themselves to two minutes. And if you have any written comments that you would like to be included in the minutes, you are welcome to submit those to Maureen and Suzanne. They'll be linked in the minutes. I'm Elizabeth Burrows, welcome.
Thank you. I just wondered, I was looking through all of the items on the really extensive agenda today, and I wondered at what point you might address the discussion regarding the roles of the State Board of Education versus the Agency of Education, whether that's coming up? And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. So we don't typically do question and answer with members of the public. I will say, obviously, that's not on today's agenda. We do have a Roles and Responsibilities Committee that is charged with looking into those issues. And I will make an announcement under Board Announcements with regard to a critical piece of what the board needs to be able to engage in that work. So stay tuned. Good question. Any other members of the public who wish to be heard? Okay, I'll keep this agenda item open for a little bit, and we will move on to our next item, which is a motion to approve the draft meeting minutes of our July 16, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll move that.
Thank you, Rich. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Who was that? Caleb?
Tom.
I think it was Lyle.
Oh, Lyle, okay. Thank you.
Sounded like my voice.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving our meeting minutes from July 16, 2025, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. I will next entertain a motion to adopt the meeting minutes of our special meeting of July 24, 2025.
So moved.
All right, thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. Cynthia, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving our special meeting minutes from July 24, 2025, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions?
All abstaining.
Oh, was that Rich?
Yes.
Okay, so Rich abstains. All right, the motion carries. Okay, just checking again for members of the public. Not seeing anyone. All right, so this takes us to Board announcements. I have one. Are there any other board members who have any announcements? All right, so my announcement is, I'd mentioned this at our last meeting, but we send out invitations to bid on a proposal for attorneys to serve as the State Board of Education's Council on Retainer last month. The deadline for interested applicants to respond to our invitation was August 12. And Tammy and I will be conducting interviews next week. So hopefully, by our next meeting, we will be able to announce who will be joining us as our Council on Retainer. And that person will be charged with really doing a lot of work for the board, attending meetings, you know, being on hand to answer legal questions as they arise, helping the board as we are invited to testify before the General Assembly. Critically, we've been given $200,000 by the legislature that will allow us to review our rules and start working with the agency to figure out which rules should we remain rules, which rules don't need to be rules. They can be policies that don't need to go through the formal rulemaking process. Which rules are better vested with the board? Which rules are better vested with the agency? So we're going to have an in-depth analysis of that. We do have our Roles and Responsibilities Committee, which is poised and ready to go to do that work. We've really just been waiting, A, for the funding, and B, for the ability to have an attorney to help us. So we are making good progress on that front. I've found that even with the sort of fast-track request for legal counsel, it usually takes about two to three months. So we were approved for funding at the end of the legislative session and scooting along, so I will have more of an update next month, but hopefully, we will have someone joining us in an official capacity this fall. All right, anything else? All right, I will circle back one last time for public to be heard. And again, we do have a space at the end of our meeting as well. Okay, I don't see anyone. So Caleb, I will turn it to you for the student report.
All right. It feels a little bit weird going first, but I'll try my best. So we, rather than implementing the cellphone law or rule, whatever you may want to call it, ban for the 26, 27 school year, have adopted it to the 25, 26 school year. And I've probably talked to about 10 students so far, which I know doesn't sound like a lot, but that's about like 10 or even higher percent of my class. So although it may not seem like a lot, it is quite a bit by scale. And the more I've talked with people through it and everything, it really does seem kind of overbearing, especially considering, like, throughout the entire day, it's our 30 minutes at lunch, and that's it. So like even in study halls, which as a student you view as your own time, because like even if there is a proctor there or a teacher, you know, whatever you may call it, it is not necessarily their time. That is like a student's time to do as they please. And although like, yes, banning a cellphone would promote like productivity, et cetera, in a study hall, it is still the student's time. So I do think that's a tad bit overbearing. But also, I think that this rule could definitely negatively affect people with 504s and things to that extent, which I know the rule does explicitly state otherwise. But as someone who knows multiple people with them, and those people have been, I won't put it as harassed, but already been bothered by using their cellphone in school, even though it's included in their 504, I think this law or ban will further make that a problem. So I think that's one major flaw. But also, just overall, I think, like, don't get me wrong, completely understand, like, there's like no reason for a cellphone to be in a classroom, to my general knowledge, right? Like, it's just a general thing. It is distracting. It is commonly misused. I understand that. And even in hallways, I understand that. But I think even disallowing it during like a five-minute passing period, I think is a bit overextensive. But I think that's the extent I'll go to today, because I haven't talked to enough people to speak for 400 students at my school. But yeah, we started our sports seasons. So we're about a week-ish in. We started on, I think it was the 14th. So we're just about a week into sports. We start on the 28th. So we started about two weeks before school started, which I don't think is too bad. I think our fall sports this year are soccer and golf. I don't know if there's anything else for fall this year. So yeah.
So Caleb, does that mean school starts next week?
Yeah, next Thursday.
Okay. And I'm curious with the cellphones and the 504 plan, is the concern, I'm just trying to understand, is the concern that students on 504 plans are allowed to keep their phones, and then this further highlights the fact, you know, which students are on a 504 plan?
Well, yeah, that's definitely one thing for sure, is like, kind of like polarization or isolation of people when I think that's unnecessary. But also, like, I know a student who's like in their 504, they're allowed to like listen to music during class. It's just part of their thing. And obviously, in some instances, that's going to require being on a phone. And I know even before this ban, there were teachers that kind of harassed them about that. So I think after this ban, it would probably get even worse.
And where are the phones going to live during the school day?
Um, just for our school, I think it's just out of sight, out of mind. Personally, I don't. Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
But also, like, as someone from, sorry, I know, I said I was done with it, but I just remembered something else. So as someone who is from out of district, you know, I walked into that school, maybe out of the over 400 students, I knew probably two people, and they weren't even in my grade. So I can't imagine walking into that school knowing literally no one, like where friendships and friend groups and everything are already made, and you're kind of just trying to maneuver your way through that. I don't think I could imagine doing that, like, without social media or technology. Like, it's really, in a day and age where we live in an age of cellphones for a reason, not only for convenience, but in a day and age where a lot of friendships are made through phones and social media, especially like when you're walking into that, like a huge group of new people, I couldn't imagine, I've done, like, having to go through that without a cellphone. That's my experience personally.
All right. Well, thank you, Caleb. Any questions or comments? All right, well, thank you. And then Brianna, I'll turn it to you. This is just kind of a brief introduction. A lot of times, the student report talks about what you're doing with your school, you know, where you are in your school career, the classes you're taking, you know, if there are any activities that you're doing after school, as well as, you know, what's going on generally with your school. And I realize your school might not even have started yet, but if you want to just provide a brief overview.
Yeah, so so far with my school, we just started like the pre-sports. So we just did like summer soccer. That started on the 14th, so we've been doing that for a little bit. School doesn't actually get running until this Monday, so pretty soon. But yeah, I haven't, kind of going on to what Caleb was saying though, too, about the phone thing. Can I add on about that?
Sure.
Okay. I've talked to a couple of students about it, and they don't seem very like excited about it, I guess you could say, because I think their main concern about it is just emergency, like scenarios, because we haven't been told much about our school. We've just been told that like a phone bill has been passed and that we're probably going to use it. And I know that it's different for every school about like how some's like, don't bring it to school at all, and then like some is like, keep it in your bag. We haven't been notified on what we're doing, but I just think so far, like a bunch of students are more afraid of what's going to happen. Because like what Caleb said, like, just like not being able to contact people. And like, there is some people I know that have to listen to music as well. And like, teachers do give them also a hard time. But I do think that phones are becoming an issue with like getting taken out in the middle of class and like not listening to the teachers to be like, to put them back in their bag. But that's what I really have for the phone bill. And then for me personally, to get to know me a little bit more, I have all my classes all signed up. I'm going to be taking the four core classes, so like English, Science, Math, History, Honors. And then I'm actually doing Riverbend, the Technology Center. I'm going to go for my Health Science and try to get my LNA by the time I graduate. And then on top of that, I am also going to be taking a Spanish class online.
Sounds busy. All right, any questions or comments for Brianna? All right, well, thank you both. I hope you both have a good start to the school year and can't wait to hear about how things are going next month. Zoe?
Thanks. I just wanted to comment on the student's perspective around the cellphone policy. And just to reiterate that the law does not require schools to implement that until next fall, so fall of 2026. So as Caleb noted, some schools are moving forward more quickly and implementing those practices this school year. But I think, Brianna, to your point, if you haven't heard a lot of information, it may be that your school is continuing to evaluate how they will implement that, and there'll be more details coming over the next year. The Agency of Education is required to provide a model cellphone policy on January of 2026. We've already released guidance to schools and districts that went out last February, and we're taking that and refining that based on the criteria within the law that was passed in consultation with some key groups to ensure that we've carefully considered the components that will make that implementation successful. So just wanted to flag that, you know, right now, about 51% of our schools already have a cellphone ban policy in place. But for those that don't, this is a transition year, and there'll be some additional guidance and support coming from the agency to implement that law. So just wanted to clarify.
So Zoe, with the model policy that the agency is developing, is there an opportunity for student input to help shape the policy?
We are in the process right now. I'm just looking at our, there's several groups that are involved in providing that feedback. So what I can do is bring that back and clarify that involvement. I know from my perspective, as I've traveled around schools, I've had a great opportunity to talk with teachers and students at schools that have implemented this. And so that's been part of the process in the agency's initial guidance that was provided. And so I'll clarify the specific opportunities for student input as we move forward. But it does need to follow the specifications of the law as written and approved. But I, one of the things I would highlight is that there's a lot of initial trepidation as the students are describing, but for those schools where it's been implemented, they've also seen a lot of positive benefits. And so I think we have great things to learn from those schools. We have heard students describing that they're less distracted, that there's more opportunity to engage face-to-face and coordinate in the hallway and playing cards at lunch and things of that nature. So I think there's some really good lessons learned from schools that have adopted this policy that are already incorporated in the law. And I do hear some of the concerns and trepidation that our students are expressing. And there'll be clear guidance also for, in that model policy, for how to communicate this. So I think the students have brought up some really pertinent questions related to this ban and what it actually means in practice, both for students and for parents. And so you'll anticipate that there'll be clearer guidance around that for schools that have not yet adopted the policy. And then some schools have adopted a policy, but not bell-to-bell. And so that will be a transition for them, because the law does require the bell-to-bell ban of the cellphones during the academic day from arrival to dismissal. So this is really a year, I would say, of transition. And lots of learning will occur through that to make sure that we can really effectively adopt the policy to meet its intended outcomes.
Great, thank you. All right, anything else for the student report?
I was just going to say that I would love to hear the specific.
So we will turn next to the update from this Special Education Advisory Panel, and I see that we have Katie Ballard with us. So just to provide a little bit of background.
Jennifer, I think Caleb was.
Jennifer, I think Caleb was trying to say something.
State establish and maintain an advisory panel for the purpose of advising the state's special education staff regarding the education of eligible children aged 3 to 21 with disabilities. Panel members.
Jennifer.
I see hands raised.
Jennifer, you started, Caleb was making a point when you started talking.
I'm sorry. Yeah. You could not hear me?
We can hear you, but you started talking when Caleb was still making a point.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I couldn't hear him.
No, that was, I thought my mic just wasn't working, so I was like, okay. No, it's pretty insignificant. I was just going to say thank you to Zoe and that I would love to hear the like specific involvement that students could have. But I'd love to spread that just fine, any way possible.
Although I think a really concrete next step would be for us to meet. So Caleb and Brianna, I'll follow up so that we can have a check-in, and I can share what input we've already received from students that went into this, and also identify any additional considerations to make sure that we are fully addressing the questions and concerns from a student perspective. So let's start there.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Great, looking forward to it.
Thank you. Sorry about that. All right, so I'm not going to redo this intro. I think we're all, well, maybe you heard it. Let me just continue that Special Education Advisory Panel members include teachers, representatives from state agencies, and independent schools, among others. And the majority of members are either individuals with disabilities or the parents of children with disabilities. Katie Ballard is the chair of the panel, and she provides updates to the board every few months on the council's work. So Katie, welcome.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you. I'm going to apologize. I'm keeping my camera off. I've been sick, and I don't think anyone wants to watch me wipe my nose the whole time. So before I jump into our update, I just want to kind of make a comment on the cellphone piece. I want first. make a comment on the cellphone piece. I want first want to say, Caleb, I think it is absolutely amazing that you brought up students with disabilities and on five oh four plans in your con- comment about the cellphone policy. I would just say this is something that we as a panel are just barely kind of getting into talking about. As as Zoe pointed out, it won't, it's not supposed to go into effect till next year. So we have a little bit of time. I would just echo Caleb's concern around teachers not always being aware of accommodations that students might have around their cellphone. And so we have heard from families that students might experience some pushback from teachers. I would also say that it's important to remember some IEP teams utilize different pieces of technology, including cell phones, smartwatches and other things like that for executive functioning purposes and to help students kind of be able to navigate independently. So I would just also encourage Secretary Saunders, if there is an opportunity where you might like feedback from our panel around the policy and how that might impact students with disabilities, we would love to be a part of that conversation. Which that kind of goes right into some of our unmet needs. Which one, I want to apologize again for sending the wrong document first. I I appreciate Chairperson Jennifer giving me an opportunity to correct that. For anybody who's looked at our unmet needs document, it is, to say the least, overwhelming. I think it's up to like forty nine pages. And just so to give a little bit of context about that, so every year, part of our panel's responsibility in federal law is to provide feedback to the state board and to the Agency of Education related to the unmet needs across the state of students living with disabilities. And so over the last couple of years, we've really tried to figure out what is the best way to document that? What is the best way to communicate that and what information is important? And so in our unmet needs document, you're going to see that first page is really going to summarize the information that's in all of those charts. So this is really going to be where you can see easier the areas of concern. So child find is definitely one that we've talked about a lot. Evaluations are in that first block. As you go down through the document, it will break down through each different section, whether it's MTSS, whether it's a different part of the IEP. And it will go into what the unmet need is, what the current law, or what we've found the current practice or information is. It'll also bring in some information, if we could find it, related to other places or other solutions that have been brought up for that. And then we always try to give that context of the the putting a face to a story, right? Because sometimes it's really hard to remember that when we're talking about a lot of these things, we're talking about people and we're talking about students. And so as as hard as some of the conversations are, we really try to connect those stories through our unmet needs so that people who maybe haven't had that opportunity to experience it or be engaged with folks with disabilities would be able to understand through the lens of people with lived experience or the professionals in the field. Overall, I would say, and I noticed that Cassie, the Director of Special Ed sent a memo to you all and a brief response to our unmet needs document. We haven't actually had a chance to talk to the AOE about the response, much other than briefly last night at our Executive Committee meeting. But I will say, I think that Cassie did a great job of capturing kind of the overall big picture unmet need areas in her letter. And so I, these are kind of the big topics that we we really wanted to highlight. Which is there's this growing disconnect between the rules in Vermont and IDEA. And what that means on the ground, right? Like we have these laws, we have these rules and regulations and we have a lot of really great guidance. And what we are finding is that the experience of students in the building and families, as well as educators is not lining up with what we have on paper and what we have in our in our regulations. We also find that there's a general lack of account accountability across the system. And I think it's just fair to point out that we recognize that there is also times where families, right? Might have things that they need to be accountable for, or students might have behaviors or or other things, times where we also need to be accountable in the process. And so when we really talk about across system, we talk about accountability for all roles in the system. And so when we looked at that, we really realized that there are some students who are held accountable and families who are held accountable for active, for advocating for different things that other families would never be held accountable for. And we also found that there are schools that are aware of things that are happening and they're not addressing it because there's not really any recourse. Or some of the things that we've heard is like, they don't feel like that's something that the state monitors. So it's not something that's necessarily their priority. And so just looking at that lack of accountability and I would say transparency is probably a word that would go in with that piece. I see a hand. Do you want me to continue or do you want me to pause?
Hey Katie, what what's easiest for you? I can wait till the end or I can ask you a question about sort of the information you just shared. What's easier for you?
If you want to ask now, we can. Either way is fine.
Yeah, I, you used the word disconnect between what we have in practice and what we have sort of in law and statute. And that, of course, creates red flags for me. Is, can you help me understand what that disconnect looks like? Is that disconnect in process, right? And sort of due process identification and and those kinds of things that are sort of statutorily required? Are we talking about a disconnect in terms of service delivery, FAP, least restrictive environment? Can you just help me understand? So or is it across the board? Like is there and or both or either or or?
I think it's an and both situation where there is a different level of disconnect at times, but it it is very clear that in some schools or districts from from the information that we've gotten, there is I'm gonna say a different interpretation of the information, for lack of a better term. So you might find that a school that like this was a couple of years ago, but a prime example would be a special educator who responded to a family and said, I don't know what IDEA is, but we don't follow that here. And that was a special educator.
They said that in writing?
Yep. And so and yeah, another example would be as a state panel member and as somebody who is an advocate. I have spent a lot of time learning from the Agency of Education and, you know, reading the information that they have on their website, reading doing webinars with them and VFN. And there's definitely a disconnect between what we hear from the Agency of Education in terms of providing services and what that looks like and how we did, how we handle it if we don't have service providers. I would say that has been something that's been very differently experienced across the state. So I don't know if that clarifies that to me.
Katie, one just a follow on question. Has has your, have you or your group been involved in the conversations by the entities that have come in representing the federal government that are monitoring and providing technical assistance to our state right now to sort of correct some of the issues that we have? Have you been involved in any of those conversations? Have you been, have you spoken to them?
I actually approached OSEP, I would say, a year and a half ago as the Chair of the Panel to bring some of our concerns, just in terms of how we felt we were being responded to and supported and the inability to to kind of follow the charge. Other than that, we have not been involved. I think we do trainings with the technical assistance folks to kind of give us support, but we have not been involved in any of the conversations around that.
So those folks have been in and out of the state now pretty consistently providing support to the agency and right, trying to sort of address a broad range of concerns that the federal government has with how our special education system is currently operating. So Zoe, I see your hand. Maybe you can sort of help us understand how you might connect with Katie's group. It seems like that would be a really, really important point of input for the right between sort of the federal monitoring and technical assistance folks and Katie's group.
So I'll share that I personally attend the panel meetings frequently to be able to share, you know, our reflections and to get their feedback. So I definitely appreciate the collaboration that we have with the panel and think that it's really productive to the work that we're doing to strengthen and enhance our service delivery. I also think it's important to flag within, you can reference Cassie's letter, as Katie mentioned, gives a summary of some of the work that's underway. But really, as we're moving forward as an agency, this is a key area for our prioritization. Is really strengthening our capacity to provide more intensive monitoring and also technical assistance as we are really elevating our accountability system wide to ensure that there are, there is not that disconnect between what's in law and what's in practice. So one of the, there's a couple of other things in place, and I do think it'd be helpful in September to do a deeper dive into this. As part of Act seventy three and our ongoing planning, there are a number of things in place to help support us in navigating this space and really increasing the level of support and also integration with general education as well. So we have a report that will be distributed on September first. That report is providing an overview of our current special education delivery and also identifying some of the cost factors and barriers along with quality. Part of that report is also evaluating the implementation of Act one seventy three. One thing that's very clear and that we are going to name is when that was implemented, there was not a robust evaluation framework put into place. And we're working with partners across the state to really identify how that needs to be remedied. I think there is consensus that the best practices in Act one seventy three are the right ones for us to implement. But we know in having a review of that implementation and working the field and analyzing the data and continuing to see persistent trends that we need to do more work in really developing a very clear blueprint which can measure both a couple of different parts in evaluation, looking at fidelity of implementation, looking at outputs and also outcomes as it relates to the overall quality of instruction. So there's a lot of detail within that analysis in that report that will be coming forward in September. Within that report, we're also gonna identify some additional areas of inquiry that we need to further pursue in order to address some of the gaps and strengthen our work in this area, which will be informing a strategic plan for special education that we're really absorbing within the agency's broader strategic plan, which I'll share a little bit more about our process update in my secretary's agenda item. But this, I just want to emphasize for the board that this is an incredible area of focus for the agency and we have been intentional around building capacity to support the field. And that capacity building has intersected both programmatic, financial and grant management as we're moving into the next academic year to ensure that there is a full set of resources available. And what Cassie, our State Director of Special Ed noted, is also the additional training that is being rolled out and monitoring that looks very different from how the agency has been supporting the field, you know, prior to the last year or so. So this is what you're seeing here is, you know, the panel is identifying gaps. We have been self diagnosing already those gaps and proactively working along with our national partners and experts across the field and the panel to develop strategies that are going to best address those. So I actually think this is a really productive first conversation for us as we go into the academic year and inability for the next meeting or meeting thereafter to really go into that deep dive so that the the board has a full understanding of the work that's underway to to strengthen the accountability and to ensure that consistency of practice so that we are meeting the full needs of our of our students.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I think I'm confused. I I think the question I asked was has Katie's group had an opportunity to meet with the team that's being sent in by OSEP and NCSI to provide technical assistance and review our system? Has that connection been made? I just heard Katie say she had to go directly to the US Department of Education as opposed to being part of that collaborative process that's going on.
Yeah, so I I think again, this is roles and responsibilities of how we're all working together. As I mentioned, we work very closely with the panel. We work with our national partners on a regular basis as we're providing technical assistance. So in terms of bridging the gap, it's being able to relay what we're learning to the panel and get some additional feedback. That process is well underway. And as I mentioned, I'm personally involved in.
Yeah. Is Katie's document gonna be shared with the federal monitoring team?
Part of our requirements to report?
It's not required. I'm just, well, I don't know if it's required. I can ask, but I mean, Katie is, when I hear disconnect and I hear things like FAP and like those are pretty egregious things. And I'm just curious whether or not the federal monitoring team and the tech, the federal technical assistance people who are in the state working with us on compliance are being connected with Katie and her group and the things that they are, they are bringing to the table. That's, I'm just trying to get clear on how the information is flowing because this document has a lot of really interesting, important things in it. I want to make sure that they are seeing that document as a part of their process. Is that happening? I'm just trying to get clear on sort of how information's.
I mean, I think it's really important to clarify that there is a process in place to review FAP. There is a formal process in place that would be followed to evaluate that, right? And so what the panel's recommendation is, is to identify where we have gaps so that we can further evaluate and make any recommendations that may be required to improve our process. But all of those findings need to be validated. And as you know, there is a very clear informal process to ensure that all of those facts are evaluated through the Agency of Education and that the appropriate actions are taken. So I just want to be very clear that there are very strong processes in place to review those findings as as you know, and as is required by IDEA. Are there opportunities to continue to strengthen that work? Absolutely. And I think your question around how we're working with the panel is, we do want to continue to be very coordinated with them. I think it is helpful as we're looking at these findings, as I mentioned, to incorporate them as we are developing our approach to evaluating the current context for special education and also informing our strategic planning process. So absolutely, this is an important input into that work. And we are continuing to work with the panel to ensure that we are strengthening our processes.
So I see a few hands raised. And I know Katie, I don't know if you're responding to anything that Zoe said. I also see Lyle and Mohammed. And I want to make sure that you have a chance to get through your report.
Thank you. I I do just want to say, one, yes, we really appreciate the connection that we've had with the AOE, especially since Cassie's come on. And having Anna Russo attend every meeting has been great. We also love having Secretary Saunders join us for our first and our last meeting to give us kind of updates about what they've been doing and and to hear from her directly a couple of times a year is very nice. When we talk about, and and as you can see in our unmet needs, one of the things that is pretty big and pretty important to us is this de-siloing of special education. And so when we talk about de-siloing and we talk about inclusion and we talk about those practices, one of the things that we as a panel have seen and to some degree, I think Secretary Saunders, some of what you just shared speaks to that. The panel is almost seen as an afterthought. We we don't really get reached out to ahead of time for information unless we're kind of asking, hey, is this something we can provide it? Unless it's something that the panel is required, like the indicators. And so I do think there is going, there should be a lot of opportunity to engage in conversations before things are being finalized and implemented and sent out to the district. And so I would just say that one of our our big recommendations is to look at how do we de-silo these conversations? So they're not having one person come to the panel, report out after you've had all of the conversation and you've done all of the work. And then kind of, we've really, other states have been doing it much differently and been proactive. And so our hope is to continue to build relationships with the state board and with the state board and with the Agency of Education to be able to continue these conversations. And Zoe, Secretary Saunders, to your point about there are systems and processes in place to address the FAP concerns and all of those other concerns, our point is those, those systems aren't working. They aren't working for families with disabilities and the experience families have going through those processes is that they're having a hard time because nobody believes them. So I just, I think that is part of where we need to have a conversation about the, the balance of power as it relates to special education in that silo. So I'm going to continue with my report if that's okay, just so I can finish. I don't want to take up everyone, all your time, but I am more than happy to have this conversation or would welcome any of you enjoining our panel if you would like to figure out how we could maybe collaborate more. So like we talked, I think I did the accountability across the system. We looked at the lack of qualified evaluators, service providers, and appropriate placements. As we look at students who are unable to be served in their, their general education classroom or in their school district, we are seeing that there is a big lack of alternative placement, which is causing kind of a situation where students are either in school doing virtual learning or they're at home, which is not ideal. There has been, we've identified a lack of support or training for general educators as it relates to special education. So giving general educators more support and resources to integrate and include students with disabilities in their general education classroom environments. We also identified district to district procedures and practices are very different. And so having a more, I don't want to say more standardized, but having a more clear understanding of how those policies could be more in line is something that we as a panel would hope to continue to discuss. We identified issues with child find across the state in terms of comprehensive evaluations not being done in a timely manner, not being done by qualified evaluators, and not fully identifying all areas of, of need. And then the last area that I want to recognize that we identified for you all is just an overall parent disempowerment. I think we have in the last several months seen the AOE really doing a lot to try and build relationship with families and parents across the state, and we appreciate that. And one of the things that really we heard and we learned last year is just an overall sense that the feedback that parents give or even, you know, the yearly survey that we, we do or families do, feeling just like that, that doesn't go anywhere. It falls kind of on deaf ears, which I can say as Chair of the panel, I've experienced Secretary Saunders and the AOE taking feedback and trying to find ways to build parent empowerment. And so I do hope that in the coming year, that is something that we can work on together. But I do know that was an area that we really identified. Some of the things that we suggested or recommended was, one was that big de-siloing of special ed. And part of that would be to proactively include people who are in the field of special education or who are parents from the panel, things like that. But also to keep in mind that having people wear multiple hats can sometimes take away from the ability to represent all of the hats that they wear at the same time. One of the things that we noticed is oftentimes in special education conversations, it's the same people being, representing the same conversations. And so we just would encourage that when we're looking at that de-siloing, that we're being intentional about making sure that we're not wearing the special education stakeholder hat at the same time as wearing the school administrator or other provider. We really, we really encourage.
Absolutely.
Sorry. Yeah. I would text you.
Mohammed, you're not muted.
Sorry about that.
I think Secretary Saunders kind of identified some of these areas, but we, we recommended increasing training, both for, for staff at the AOE and for districts around a number of things that are in here. One of the big things was having administrators or having the appropriate people attend as the LEA at IEP meetings. And I think that's something that we've been working with AOE on for a bit now. But our hope is to continue seeing more training on that. Again, meaningful accountability kind of across the system. And I know that Secretary Saunders and her group are really working on a lot of that. And our hope would be to continue the conversations that we've already had about the challenges and barriers that families with disabilities especially might run into when trying to address situations. Things that we've seen are retaliation. We've seen, you know, both in terms of punishment towards students, but also in actions towards families. We would love to, we would encourage the state to continue to align practice and, and implementation on the ground with federal and state regulations and the expectations that the agency has. And I think we've covered the other ones, so I'm not going to keep repeating myself because I feel like I've gone long. But I would just say, we're also going to be sending out, we're just waiting for our appendixes, our annual report, which talks about some of this in there, just in terms of the challenges that we have faced and some of the priorities and things that we're hoping for in the next year.
Great. Thank you, Katie. Zoe, I see your hand raised. And I know that Lyle and Mohammed both had their hands raised from a few minutes ago. So if, if either or both of you want to raise your hand again, please do so, as well as any other board, board members, obviously. Zoe?
I, I just want to thank Katie and the panel. I mean, I think as you're hearing, there has been a lot of focus and coordination. It's important to note that for many years, the state of Vermont has been out of federal compliance with IDEA. And also, I think it's very well known that there have been challenges with fidelity of implementation of some of the best practices identified within Act 173. And so as we're developing our strategic plan at the agency and as we have collected input from the field and analyzed the data, this is a key area of our prioritization and focus as we move forward. And so you can hear in the conversation today that we have identified gaps and that we are being very proactive in addressing them through enhanced monitoring, improved training. We're also doing a lot of that training internally with the agency to break down silos within our, the support that we can provide from the state level, along with additional training to general education teachers across Vermont. So just want to call out that this is, and it's an opportunity for us to be really clear-eyed about where we have had really persistent challenges in this area and that we as an agency are very committed to strengthening our capacity and support and are really proud of the measurable steps we've been taking in this particular area. I want to continue to work very closely with the panel. I think there's always opportunities for us to strengthen the way that we partner. And so that's something we can certainly take away around making sure that there's that really close collaboration as we're moving forward and this being a very key priority for us as an agency. I, I also wanted to give the opportunity for our State Director, for Cassie Santo, just to, to mention some, to address some of the specific questions that, that were raised around next steps and, and addressing some of the unmet needs that haven't identified and we're working towards. With your permission, Chair Samuelson, I'll give the floor to Cassie Santo.
Sure.
Absolutely. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me here today. And Katie, thank you for the work of the panel. I just wanted to add to how this document is critical to our work and, and really part of SEEP's work is to advise us on unmet needs and the education of children with disabilities. And they've been doing that. I moved into this position in November and we've met pretty regularly. So we've been a part of them developing this document over the past couple of months. And to be fully transparent, it aligns with what our team has identified as, as needs across our state. So it's fully in line with what, with what we see as a team. We've reworked our monitoring system with advice from the Special Education Advisory Panel that has come in over the years, which has involved directly changing our system from simply reviewing transition plans to reviewing entire IEPs, which this is our first year of launching that work. And I, NCSI did come out in March. Amy Peterson and Kate Fantasio were here in March and met with the panel. So there was that crossover connected with some of that work. We do feel really locked step and I just appreciate Katie so much. Again, we're strengthening capacity and support. That's a focus at the agency. Zoe's leadership has sort of allowed us to move in that direction and, and to hopefully continue this close collaboration as we acknowledge the needs in our state, see the alignment of all of our thinking, and then start to make moves towards how we address some of the needs. Because the needs are great and it's going to require a collective effort. And I'll stop talking now and kick it back over to Katie.
Thanks, Cassie. Katie, did you have a response before I go to Lyle?
Not necessarily a response. I realize I left off one of the most important areas of unmet need that I wanted to make sure I mentioned, and that is the growing gap, the growing achievement gap between students who are not disabled and students who are living with disabilities and just seeing kind of the data and the scores around that. So one of the areas of, of unmet need is definitely how do we close that gap? And that's a conversation that we've been engaged with the Agency of Education and with Cassie and Anna ongoing for that. I also did just want to say, when we talk about de-siloing special education and we talk about, and we asked Secretary Saunders, you know, about including the panel, I would also just put this out there to the state board. I think that goes for the state board as well. If there are opportunities where you are changing rules or you are engaging in big policy conversations, I would always, I, we are always willing to be a part of those conversations. And I think the more that we can break down some of these silos between the different groups and the different conversations that are happening, the better. And so as you guys are working through your year, if there are rules that you're going to be opening or there are policies that you're really spending a lot of time on, I try to follow everything on the state board, but I do miss it. And so please, we would really love to build capacity and relationship with the state board as well.
Thanks, Katie. That's a great, great idea. Obviously, we, we want to partner with you. And I think for me, I mean, one thing I do want to say is just how comprehensive this report is. It was impressive to me and striking. I think that's how I would describe it. And so I, I realize that any report is really the tip of the iceberg of the information that feeds into it. So monumental effort to put this together. And I just, you know, want to thank you and the panel for taking the time to do that. And I think the thing that was also really striking to me is, you know, as you keep mentioning the, the siloing and just how critical it is for the gen ed professionals to have awareness and to be part of this conversation and to not, you know, have sort of these lanes with the, it's really a collective effort. And I think that really was clear to me reading through this document. So to your point, yes, I think as the state board considers the work that we have in front of us, this is a critical piece of it. So I appreciate the reminder. Let's see, Lyle, do you still have anything that you want to? I'm not going to put you on the spot, but.
Oh, I think it might be just a quick answer. I, I'm trying to better understand the layers of work that are going on. And it sounds like that, that the, the panel is intended to be complimentary to the work that's underway with the Agency of Education, informing them of things maybe that are from a different silo than what we are all used to working within. But I just wanted to go back to the beginning, which you may have already told us, Jennifer, but what empowered the panel and, and ultimately, what are the powers of the panel? I guess I'm wondering where that, where it all originated from.
Through IDEA.
What's a requirement of IDEA?
It's an IDEA requirement, yeah.
I'm happy to, if it helps, I can put that actual like legislation with the roles and responsibilities in the chat or share those out loud for folks if, if you'd like.
I was gonna say, I have it up in front of me as well. And it's in our annual report on the first, the first page. But it is, it is very clear in IDEA, the scope and the role of the panel, which is basically to advise the state on unmet needs and the education of children with disabilities, comment publicly on any rules and regulations proposed by the state regarding the education of children with disabilities, advise the state in developing evaluations and reporting on data as required by federal special education laws, advise the state in developing corrective action plans for the US Department of Education, and advise the state in developing and implementing policies related to the coordination of services with children with disabilities.
That's what I needed to hear. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Lastly, I will just say that very long, in-depth document of our unmet needs, just to be transparent, that unmet document is one that we've started and you'll see maybe some references to COVID still in there. So what we've done is we've tried to continue to update as we're going through each year on where things stand that we've identified previously. And so this, that is where you're seeing a lot of the information come in. And we do try to put as much in that form as possible in case we don't get to have these conversations so that it can almost stand alone, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we turn to our next agenda item? Close this one out.
I will go if there is no hand raised.
Sure.
Thank you. I've been patient enough and listening to everyone's perspective about the panel and the de-siloing of special education. As a part of that work, I really want to applaud a few folks, especially to Secretary Saunders, who helped me connect myself with Stephanie Boggo, whom is the ML Director at the state level, ID Joe, her assistant, Nancy Helen, I applaud you as well, the great Alison, Amanda Haas, Anna Russo, whom is here with us, and Casey Santos. We've been meeting and we have at least had maybe three to four meetings already. And those meetings are all nothing but to find barriers around special education, specifically when it overlaps with ELL education, where we call it technically a dual identity or dual identification. There are so many barriers we have pulled out upon our discussions. And I am so grateful that on the field memo, which was the last or the one before the last, that the AOE launched a week, this week, actually, it ends tomorrow, an information session about the special education overall for all educators. My only recommendation about that session that is ongoing that ends tomorrow is for it to be, if possible, of course, audio recorded somewhere, reserved somewhere, just like as in a webinar. So those folks who have not had the chance to be a part of it, get that resource somewhere. Because this week, as you all know, it's in-service session. Teachers are just coming back to school and many folks may have missed this wonderful sessions. Honestly speaking, I have not looked at the all content myself and I was not even able to attend any of the sessions since it started and it ends tomorrow. So I myself didn't have the time to, some time to attend any of the sessions per se. So it would be wonderful if we have it recorded and, and/or have another session sometimes in mid-year. I wouldn't even say in mid-year, maybe in the next two months. Just to say that is, change takes time in the US, in our country. It's very complicated. But I'm so grateful that some collaboration has started along those lines. Just thinking in a universal design way, really to meet students and families where we need to improve. So just want to add that, please, and thank you all.
Thank you, Mohammed.
Can I let Mohammed know something really quickly about that session is that we do plan for much of the information to be posted and it does just depend on the host. So that particular session, our team can reach out to you once it's posted. And I don't think it will take two months, but it's true that sometimes, sometimes it can, but I don't expect this to. So thanks for attending the session.
Okay.
Great. Zoe, final word.
Mohammed, I just wanted to thank you for your ongoing partnership and commitment to working with the team on overcoming these barriers. So thank you very much.
All right. So we'll leave it. Katie, thank you so much for your report and a robust conversation. Very much appreciated. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. And as I said, I'll be sending our annual report once I have all the appendix, appendices to you, hopefully by the end of the week. Thank you, everyone.
All right. All right, next up, we have an update on the Commission on the Future of Public Education in Vermont. And just to provide a little bit of background on this. So the Commission was created by the Property Tax Yield Bill of 2024, also known as H eight eighty-seven. Most recently, however, Act seventy-three of 2025 drastically winnowed the Commission's charge. And so this went into effect the summer. It had been, there were multiple pages in H eighty, H eight eighty-seven of duties that the Commission was charged with discharging. That's now been collapsed down because we're on a pretty short timeline. So pursuant to Act seventy-three, the Commission is studying Vermont's public education system and making recommendations to ensure that all students are afforded quality educational opportunities in an efficient, sustainable and equitable education system that will enable students to achieve the highest academic outcomes. The result of the Commission's work shall be recommendations for what roles, functions or decisions should be a function of local control and what roles, functions or decisions should be a function of control at the state level. So specifically, the Commission's new charge is to include recommendations for necessary updates to the roles and responsibilities of school district boards and the electorate, including any amendments to statute that may be necessary. Second, a process for a community served by a school to have a voice in decisions regarding school closures and recommendations for what that process shall entail. And third, a process for monitoring implementation in a manner that is transparent and public facing. So that's really been the new goals of the Commission since the summer. We also now have a new Chair and Vice Chair. The Chair is now Jay Nichols from the Vermont Principals Association. And the Vice Chair is Peter Conlon, who is a representative and the Chair of the House Education Committee. So since our last board meeting, the Commission met on July sixth, no, I'm sorry, July twenty-first, August fourth, and then this past Monday, the eighteenth. We've had a presentation from the V S B A on current roles and responsibilities of school boards, just to kind of ground that conversation for us. We've begun a discussion on what should be a function of state control and what should be a function of local control. Also beginning the discussion of the process for school closures, should they occur? And we are working through a matrix that visualizes a side by side of the key players, roles and responsibilities as they currently exist, what they might look like in the future, and viewing everything through the lens of improving educational opportunities and outcomes for students. So, you know, peppered throughout our conversations are, you know, this reminder that this, this is why the Commission is doing the work that it's doing. And this is, any changes that are recommended and ultimately enacted by the legislature really need to achieve that goal of improving student outcomes. So we had a conversation about who should be responsible for setting the vision for education in Vermont. Everyone agreed it should be set at the state level. As board members know, the State Board of Education is charged in statute with creating the vision. But of course, we've not had the resources. And so there was discussion about really, you know, working together with the agency to craft that vision. That that's not like a final decision, but there was some general consensus that, you know, we've got two overarching organizations that are involved with education and that it would be helpful to have, you know, one vision for the state of Vermont and that those two organizations, the agency and the state board, should work together to craft that. The mission which drives the vision should be set at the district level. That was the general consensus. We had a pretty robust conversation about whether the negotiation of collective bargaining agreements should be joined to negotiations of health insurance because currently, health insurance is negotiated at the state level. Collective bargaining agreements are negotiated at the district level. So we had a conversation about that, pros and cons. And with regard to school closures, again, we just really started that conversation this week. There was consensus that any decision to close a school board, a school, should be based upon clearly defined data. So people know at the outset what those criteria might be that might trigger a school closure with a long ramp up to that process. Communities need to be engaged, the process needs to be transparent, and above all, we need to keep students at the forefront. The V S B A will be providing another presentation next month. This one will be on school districts and equitable budgeting. And so we still are under an October first deadline to wrap up our report, preliminary report that would then go for public comment with the thirty day comment period. And then the final report is due December first. So I'll pause there if there are any questions. And Zoe, I don't know if you have anything that you want to add.
I think you covered it, Bob.
All right. All right. So the next commission meeting, I believe, is September eighth from one to four. And that one is in person. Suzanne, can you help me? I forget where that meeting will be. Not to put you on the spot. Well, it will be posted. So if board members are interested, it'll be posted, I can let you know.
And it is in Grand Isle Folsom Elementary School?
Okay, thank you. All right, so next we have committee updates. So we've got, oh, no, I'm looking at the wrong agenda. Hang on, I lost my. I just lost my agenda. If anyone wants to jump, is it the secretary's report that's next on the agenda, I believe?
That would be about the Inspire School.
Okay, update on the Inspire School. Okay, thank you. So you have in your agenda packet, there was an order that was generated by our hearing officer, Adam Powers. And he held a pre-hearing conference on August the eighth. At that hearing, the parties, the Inspire School and the Agency of Education, jointly introduced a stipulated motion to stay the proceeding until September second. So you have that order from Attorney Powers granting the request for stay in the agenda packet. And then also yesterday afternoon, I received a memo from Emily Simmons, which has also been included in the agenda packet, advising that the Inspire School is now closed. They closed last week and they are currently in the process of making sure that students have a place to go and transferring student records. So Zoe, I'll stop there. I don't know if there's anything that you want to add to that.
I think you covered the the general points there. You know, just for context, you know, my recommendation as secretary came after a very lengthy investigation process. We documented those, those findings. The board did move forward with appointing the hearing officer. As you noted, since then, there has been a development and the Inspire School has determined that they will close effective September second. The Agency of Education is involved in supporting with those and overseeing those closeout activities. And we have been in contact with the impacted districts. I personally spoke with the superintendents that are impacted and understand that they're working very diligently to find alternate placement for the, the four Vermont students that previously were enrolled at the Inspire School. And Emily Simmons can expand and provide any other detail that may be meaningful for the board to understand.
Sure. So I apologize that you just got this memo yesterday. We're, you know, getting information continuously to monitor the closeout of business of the Inspire School. So I've just wanted to highlight that that memo does update you on the current state as of this week. I'm in regular contact with the school's legal counsel just to ensure that the agency is keeping eyes on the closeout activities that are outlined by state board rule, which really come down to the disposition of the student records. Everything that they're doing sounds good to me. We do still have technically the pending hearing. So my view is that we should just stay the hearing rather than dismiss. And so that's why we jointly stipulated to that stay until September second because that's how long Inspire anticipated they would need to complete all those closeout activities.
Thank you, Emily. Comments or questions either for Zoe or Emily? All right, so I imagine by our September board meeting, we will have a further, perhaps, final update on this agenda item. All right.
Yes, I I expect actually that you will have a final order recommended to you from your hearing officer by your September meeting.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Okay. So committee updates. The first update is the State Aid for School Construction Advisory Board. So as the board may recall, at our last meeting, Rich agreed to serve on the advisory board as my designated. The other board members have now been named and include State Treasurer Mike Pichak, Commissioner of Buildings and General Services, Wanda Minoli, Michael, and I hope I'm saying this correctly, Gogan, from the Vermont Bond Bank, two House Appointees, Marty Spalding and Sean McManon, and two Senate Appointees, David Epstein and Holly Anderson. So the first meeting has been scheduled and will be held August twenty-fifth from eleven a.m. to twelve p.m. And I think Rich is going to be sending out an email. Rich could serve as Chair, but I don't know if Rich wants to serve as Chair. But anyone who is interested in serving as Chair of the Advisory Board should email Rich by this Friday because that will be the first order of business on the agenda. So and I think I will pause there. Rich, I don't know if you have anything that you want to add, maybe not because you haven't met yet.
No, hopefully next board meeting, we'll know who the Chair is and where we're headed.
Right.
And I think it's Suzanne's helping us with this and she's, but our helpers are doing a great job. They got the meeting lined up and got everybody together. So I'd like to really thank them. They do wonderful work for us.
They do. Thank you. All right, Small Schools and Spark Schools Standards Committee, Tammy, if you want to provide any update?
Yeah, just a quick update. Though we're going to get going here in the next few weeks on, on an outline. I reached out to both Cindy and Brian this morning. It just wasn't something we, we, well, wasn't something we could do, I could do in August. So we're going to start that here in the next few weeks.
All right. And Zoe, you had submitted this slideshow just to kind of ground the, the conversation?
Slides as background. And if the board is interested, Toren Ballard is available to walk through those slides just to ensure that board members have clarity around the scope of the responsibility and the charge of each committee. But if that, we don't have to, as there is a reference, and we're happy to walk through it in detail. That would be helpful to the board.
Sure, well, I mean, we have another ten minutes on this agenda item, so.
Well, with that, I will introduce Toren Ballard, who is our Director of Policy and Communications, to walk through that background on the scope and the charge of those committees and the important work that you will be doing in support of the transformation. So, Toren, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, good morning, everybody. How are y'all doing today? As Zoe said, my name is Toren Ballard, Communications and Policy Director at the Agency of Education. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I'll try to keep this relatively brief. This is not entirely new information. I believe I gave a general summary of Act seventy-three at the June meeting. So I'll go a little more in depth into that. But a lot of this work is still to be determined. So I'll just give a very brief overview. So I'll talk first about state aid for school construction. So when I took this job at the agency, it was up to the very tail end of this past legislative session. And my perception at the time was that out of all the components of Act seventy-three, the school construction aid part really wasn't receiving quite as much attention as maybe other components of the bill. I think that started to change in the last month or so. I know I've been getting a lot of emails and calls from local reporters. There's been a lot of stories about this and I think for good reason. It's obviously been a very long time since state aid for school construction has been available in Vermont. I believe two thousand and seven was the last year in which we had an operational fund like this. And to put that in perspective, I was in middle school at U thirty-two at the time. So it has been a little while since then. But however, Act seventy-three does direct the agency to begin implementing the State Aid for School Construction Program over the next few years. So to give a very general overview of the program itself, it's designed to address much-needed infrastructure needs throughout the state by providing aid to cover a portion of the debt service costs on school construction projects. Now, if there's any takeaway from this brief presentation today, it's the timeline for implementation of this program. So the only thing that's happened so far is that on July of this past year, the sections, section fourteen and fifteen of Act seventy-three, which just has to do with the advisory board, was enacted. So I believe they will have their first meeting by September first of this year. The state board under the law is going to be providing recommendations on the transfer of debt obligations from old districts to new districts by December fifteenth of this year. That's obviously going to be a very important component of the switch to new districts as well as how the state is going to handle this debt going forward. Now, you'll notice that the law itself actually does nothing this year in terms of the actual program. The State Aid for School Construction Program doesn't actually get enacted until July first of next year. So in July first of two thousand and twenty-six, the agency will assume responsibility for the program. And that will include transferring rulemaking authority on school construction and capital outlay to the Agency of Education. And at the same time, the School Construction Aid Special Fund will also be enacted. So because the special fund and the rulemaking doesn't get enacted until two thousand and twenty-six, until July first of two thousand and twenty-six, the earliest legislative session in which the General Assembly might start appropriating funding for the program would be in two thousand and twenty-seven. And so that means that we, the earliest that we might see this program funded and operational would be during fiscal year two thousand and twenty-eight. Now, I think everybody across Vermont is very eager to get state aid flowing to school districts. We all agree on that. But I do just want to kind of level set expectations on the timeline under Act seventy-three. And so again, probably the earliest that we would see money actually flowing to districts would be fiscal year two thousand and twenty-eight, which would be the year before new school districts would go into operation under the law. And the last thing I'll mention here is that th- this part of Act seventy-three is not dependent on new school districts being enacted. Obviously, much of the law is dependent on that transfer to new districts. All of the school construction sections, so sections twelve through twenty, is not dependent on that at all. So we have the advisory board went into effect July first of this year and all the other components of the state aid program go into effect July first of next year. Now, to give just a general overview of how the awards work, under, under the law, the base amount for every award will be equal to twenty percent of the debt service cost on an eligible project. Now, school districts will also be eligible for up to an additional twenty percent, so for a total of forty percent of the debt service cost, depending on bonus incentives that will be determined in rulemaking. Under the law, the secretary also has authority to grant emergency aid, which would be worth up to thirty percent of the debt service cost. Now, Act seventy-three provides kind of an outline of this program, but there are a lot of aspects of the program that are to be determined. This includes the point priority. This includes the point prioritization methodology for determining who should get the money. Um, because I'm assuming there'll probably be quite a few districts that will be applying for this, as well as the rules for all of the required components of a preliminary application for any aid. And then probably the biggest component that is to be determined will be the budget for the program. Um, and like I said, the first year that we would see the legislature potentially appropriating money and considering the budget for the program would be in 2027. Now, just to briefly give an overview of the process for obtaining aid under Act 73, given that a lot of this is still to be determined, the general idea is that the process would get kickstarted by a district submitting a preliminary application to the Agency of Education. The Secretary would review and potentially approve a preliminary application. Once that happens, and once a district has authorized funding for the project in general, the agency with advice from the Advisory Board will assign points to the project and place it on a priority list based on the number of those points. Now, at any point after receiving approval of the preliminary application, a district may submit the final application to the Secretary. And once all of these steps have been completed, the Secretary may approve the final application. So it is a somewhat, it's kind of a long process. Um, but as we get into rulemaking, as we start to start determining some of these processes a little more clearly, we'll be able to share a little more what this will look like in practice. Now, the very last section that I'll talk about briefly is the Advisory Board for the School Construction Program. The Advisory Board is gonna advise on implementation of the program. So this includes everything from adopting rules to setting statewide priorities, the criteria for approving projects, and then also just recommendation for prioritization for project approval. The membership is gonna be four permanent members, as well as four members that have four-year terms. Now, the first major task of the Advisory Board is gonna be recommendations for addressing the transfer of debt obligations from current school district districts to future school districts. Um, and that will be due in December 15th of this year. So if there are any questions on anything related to school construction aid, I'd be happy to field those at this point. And I see one right there.
What, what is that current debt obligation?
The, are you asking for the level, like the statewide?
Right.
Number?
Right. Do we know that number?
I'm sure somebody knows it. I do not have that number off the top of my head, though. But I'm happy to look into that and follow up with you.
Okay, that's actually an area where there's additional work required with the field uh, to um, accurately quantify uh, that debt service across districts.
It'll be interesting to know, thank you, when when that's available.
Absolutely.
So, Torrin, I'm curious, and I hope this isn't like a, a basic question, but I know there are so many schools with a lot of deferred maintenance, a lot of problems needing to be rebuilt in their useful life. Where's the money coming from to fund this?
That is to be determined at this point. I think that's gonna be a very critical conversation that we'll see at the legislature. Um, perhaps this coming legislative session and definitely the year after that. The way that the budget will generally work is that the Agency of Education will figure out how much money we think we need for the program. We'll request that as part of the agency's budget. We'll give that recommendation to the legislature, and then they will deliberate about how much money to appropriate and, most importantly, where that money will come from. But the source of that money is not laid out in Act 73, but that is a very good question, though.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions on state construction aid before I move on to small and sparse schools? Okay, I'll go ahead and move on here. And if there's any questions that come up later about school construction aid, feel free to reach out to me at, at any point. I'll put my email up at the end of this slideshow. So, in addition to each district's educational opportunity payment, um, which will be how, that'll be the money that the Foundation Formula gives to each school district under Act 73 once new school districts go into effect in the 2028 to 2029 school year. Act 73 also establishes support grants for schools that are deemed to be either small by necessity or sparse by necessity. Now, this part of Act 73 is relatively straightforward, except for one part at the very end, which will be up to the State Board. But to give a very brief overview of what the law says, so for the Small School Support Grant, this will be a little over $3,000 per student, which will eventually be adjusted for inflation. This is gonna be available to schools that have less than 100 students that are also deemed to be small by necessity. Now, the sparse school support grant is gonna be a little under $2,000, and that will be available to schools located in a city, town, or incorporated village with fewer than 55 persons per square mile that are also deemed to be sparse by necessity. So Act 73 defines what a small school is and what a sparse school is, but the law does not define what small by necessity means or sparse by necessity means. So that is gonna be up to, the State Board will be submitting proposed standards for both of those definitions to the House and the Senate Education Committees later this year. And I believe in the coming legislative session, those definitions will, the ideas that the legislature will put those into law at that point. But it's important to know that the, the by necessity part of both the Small Schools and the Spar School Support Grant, those are still to be determined. And, you know, I, I, I think it's fair to say that one of the biggest sources of anxiety around Act 73 is this kind of prospect of smaller sparse schools being closed through this process. And so obviously, the support grants are gonna be a very important component of a reimagined system of education in Vermont. So obviously, this work is very important. Um, there's a lot of work to be done here, and I'm very interested to see what those proposed standards wind up being and how that plays out in the legislature. Are there any questions about these support grants?
Lyle?
So there must be a, already a proposed list. You must know which schools have fewer than 100 students and which schools are in an area with 55 persons or less per square mile. Is that list available, or is that still?
Yeah, so Lyle, Lyle, these are the same, these are the same criteria that are in the exist, that came out of the existing weighting study, and so those, those lists are around, right? Because we already have weights for small and sparse.
So I could find that list where, Tammy? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Zoe, do you have, I mean, I can pull it, but Zoe, do you have it handy? Because you're doing the weighting calculations?
Yeah, we absolutely can and will share that data. I think it would be very important to inform on the State Board's work on this committee, so that will be a follow-up.
Thank you.
And Lyle, I can send, and Lyle, I can send you a copy of the 2019 report that is, that sort of is gives you rationale about why those cut points were set.
Perfect, thanks, Tammy.
Tammy, can you send that out to everyone? Or to me in particular, I guess.
Yeah, I've got an email going to you already, Cindy, so it's in there, yeah. As I said in my note this morning, I, as many of you know, I was in an accident, so I have not been working full strength the last few weeks. We'll get, we'll get going here in the next few days.
So the last thing I'll mention is that just, if anybody has any additional questions about the law or any aspect of this, feel free to reach out to me, torrin.ballard@vermont.gov. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that might come up.
Alright, Torrin, thank you very much for the presentation. That was helpful.
Absolutely, happy to help.
Alright, um, so this brings us now to the Secretary's report, so Zoe, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to begin by um, providing some updates around the Agency of Education's leadership team. Um, so I'll first thank Torrin Ballard. He joined our team in the spring as the Director of Policy and Communications. As you can tell, he has a great command um, around the, the policy um, issues and um, the new laws that we're implementing in Vermont and will continue to be a great resource to the State Board. Um, I'm also pleased to introduce to you today our new Chief Academic Officer. Uh, Dr. Erin Davis um, has joined the Agency of Education. Um, and she comes to us with a multifaceted experience um, in the education space, both as um, including um, working as a teacher, an instructional coach, a building leader, a district leader, and most recently as um, working at a national nonprofit, um, supporting a system improvement and number of public um, school districts across the country. Uh, so we are very pleased to have her on board. Um, uh, she has really hit the ground running, um, and I'd like to give her the floor to give a little bit of background um, on her experience and um, you know, her, her interest in, in taking on this role.
Yeah, I think, Zoe, it's, it's lovely to meet you all. Um, I am originally from Vermont. I am a product of the South Burlington School District System. Um, previous to that, my mom was in Burlington Schools. We go way back into the family. Um, and I really just, I think that I was very lucky in that I had a wonderful educational experience in the public school system here in Vermont. Um, after graduating from South Burlington High School, I moved out of state for undergrad and then found myself as a third grade teacher in Tulsa, Oklahoma, which is a very different educational context, um, very different system to ours. And um, really loved teaching, loved the community that I was working in, but was very aware that the um, resources and investment in the education experiences there were drastically different than those that I had experienced myself. And that really sparked a passion for me of um, not just the classroom level, then the school level, and then the systems level adjustments and improvements that need to be made in order for students to have access to equitable education. Um, Zoe kind of gave you an arc of the different roles that I've held. I um, while in Oklahoma, I got my master's to become an educational admin, or an education administrator. And then just in December, finished my doctorate in social foundations of education. Um, we moved home to Vermont about three years ago. My folks had since moved to Williston, so that's where we're based now as well. I had a, a pandemic baby, and so we were eager to be closer to grandparents and have extra hands available. Um, and it's been lovely to be back in the state. I was able to um, finish out that doctorate and continue to work remotely for the national education nonprofit that Zoe mentioned. Um, but was still really looking for local opportunities to have an impact on the education system here in my home state. So when I saw the Chief Academic Officer role come available, um, I had been attending to the work that um, is happening through Act 73, of course, and the leadership that Zoe's been bringing to the agency. And I just was very, very excited to be offered the opportunity to join that work. Um, I am about three and a half weeks in and have hit the ground running. Um, very lovely to meet you all and eager to continue the work in partnership with you.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you, Erin, and, and welcome to our team. Um, so Erin will be um, overseeing and supporting uh, special education. She'll also be bringing some renewed focus and support around curriculum and instruction um, and ensuring really continuity around um, our critical to career education programs, thinking of pre-K through adult education. Um, really creating that coherence and alignment, um, along with enhancing our efforts to support school improvement. Um, so really, um, welcome her uh, to this role. Um, under, um, under her purview, she'll also be supporting the work underway around um, recommending statewide graduation requirements. Um, so we're looking forward to bringing that forward to you um, in the next, um, in the next couple of months. Um, as that is an area where we will be um, collaborating very, very closely. Um, so with that, um, I, I wanted to just take a moment um, to really think about as we approach the new school year. You know, it comes with a lot of excitement and opportunity, um, and we certainly feel that at the Agency of Education. Um, we see this new school year um, as a chance for us to um, you know, really um, strengthen our support to the field um, and address um, many of the um, areas that we know uh, we need to improve. Um, so we started this conversation at the State Board um, to talk about some of those unmet needs um, that our special education panel um, identified. Um, and those are really underway in terms of how we're addressing that work. Um, you know, we, as an agency, about a year ago, we kicked off um, our Listen and Learn Tour that offered us a critical opportunity um, to rethink um, how the agency can meet the evolving needs of the Vermont, the Vermont education system. Um, and not long after that, um, Vermont's federal monitoring visit uh, took place by the U.S. Department of Education. Um, through that process, we reflected on our strengths and our weaknesses in relation to federal compliance requirements and best practice, and best practices. Um, and then in January, as you know, we, we kicked off this marathon legislative session, and that brought new requirements and new opportunities to strengthen equity, quality, and accountability across the Vermont education system. Um, and then finally, we've entered, you know, a, a spring and summer um, that's headlined by growing uncertainty at the federal level. Um, and I think the overarching lesson for us over the last 12 months um, is that the Agency of Education needs to continue to transform and evolve to adapt to rapid changes taking place at the local, state, and federal levels. Um, and we are actively working to realign our work to meet the pressing needs from the field um, and to really support um, the state's transition um, to um, this new vision um, that's being um, outlined within Act 73 in order for us as an agency to be best positioned to deliver on those educational priorities. Um, we've reflected over the last month of the importance of the agency being able to have that kind of calm and steady hand of leadership, given the uncertainty um, that we uh, continue to face um, within the federal context. And also the changes ahead um, as we think about the transformation. So I think learning all of this, what you can expect um, from the agency is we are entering this new academic year um, with a very clear focus um, on identifying our priorities and really ramping up um, our support um, in key areas. Um, we have, as part of our strategic planning process, developed our framework. Um, and that is um, outlining our key priorities um, for the state, which is designed to improve um, academic excellence, expand college and career readiness, support safe and healthy schools, improve special education and dis- and differentiated support for all students, and improve operational effectiveness, both at the agency level um, and within, across the state. So in, in the coming months, um, we will continue to develop and refine these strategic priorities. We will be setting very clear um, goals um, that will be measurable um, for the next five years um, and key strategies. We are rolling out um, a number of opportunities to engage in public feedback as we are at this really critical point of our strategic planning development process, where we are refinancing the plan um, and clarifying um, you know, directionally where we're headed um, and within this framework to make significant improvements. Um, so it's really an exciting time, I think, as we're entering um, this academic year. Um, and while the agency, you know, continues to have a number of deliverables related to Act 73 that we're responsible for, we're also very committed to providing the um, technical support and training to the field now. Um, and so that's gonna be very evident as I continue to bring forward um, my updates um, on a monthly basis. Um, you'll see that, I'll, I'll share some really concrete ways in which we are advancing this work um, and be, being very focused um, around how the agency can best support um, the field and delivering on these priorities, which have emerged um, through the work we've done over the last year, like the feedback we've heard through the Listen and Learn, the feedback we've received from um, the federal government through the monitoring visit, and a lot of really intensive data analytics um, that have been underway. Um, so really just wanted to express to you um, really our, our enthusiasm as we enter this new school year um, and that we're um, entering that with a very resolute focus um, on um, supporting the field of these key priorities. Um, I do wanna highlight a couple of practical updates um, regarding how we are um, supporting the field um, with newly enacted standards and laws. Um, so I'll just make a, a couple notes here. Um, related to the education quality standards and the district quality standards, um, those um, went into effect in July of 2025. And as I previously shared with the board, our approach is to um, implement a beta test um, to support and evaluate those high-leverage education and district quality standards. We will be rolling out a self-assessment tool and a reporting process. Um, and we'll be providing some initial communication to the field um, as early as this week um, around um, that work. Um, this is also occurring, this beta test, at a time where um, there's gonna be some updates too, to these standards, um, per the direction of too to these standards per the direction of Act 73. And so we're being mindful and pragmatic around how we support that work. I want to note that there may be exceptions and waivers that the field will be submitting. So we are, have started to receive some waivers for the education quality standards. We are building out a form by which those waivers can be completed by the school board. All waivers will be sorted by the Agency of Education, and those specific to class and caseload requirements will be handled internally through the Agency of Education. And then waivers that pertain to other sections of the education quality standards, we will collate and submit to the board. So we are working to provide a process around that, and we'll share more details with the board at the end of this week or early next week to make sure that, that you have visibility. And we would expect that you could receive those waiver requests as early as your next September meeting. Related to updates around implementation of Act 73, the Agency of Education has published the list of independent schools that are approved or eligible to receive public tuition based on the new criteria in Act 73. So that was the first component of Act 73 to go into effect. That is now on our website. So as a follow-up, I will also share that we've included a section on our website for Act 73 where we will update you around reports that have been submitted in accordance with our requirements to, to make those recommendations. We, as I mentioned earlier, will be submitting a special education report that is due on September 1st. We have engaged, the Special Education Policy Sprint Team has been working really collaboratively with us to review the draft and provide really focused input. It has been an incredibly productive process, and I really thank everyone who's been involved in bringing forward some very constructive points that we should focus on. Something we've been really clear about and consistent as an agency is that the report in and of itself is not the end of the work. The report is helping us to evaluate the current state and plan for a path forward. So it's a tool that we're using as we work to strengthen our special education delivery and differentiated support for all learners. That report will also help to inform the special education strategic plan that's required. So as I've outlined within our overall strategic plan framework, it does have a very specific focus on enhancing special education delivery. And so that requirement within Act 73 will kind of be, you know, under the purview of our broader strategic plan. There is a deadline of December for us to produce that, and so we are working really expeditiously. I think it's important to recognize that these are all very tight timelines that we're operating around, and so we are being thoughtful and mindful in all of the reports that we produce to identify if there's missing data or if there's additional inquiry that needs to be reviewed in order to better inform future policy direction. So just wanted to make sure that we're consistent in communicating that. We are definitely moving forward and will be able to deliver in all these deadlines, and we also recognize that these recommendations are very consequential and that there may be further considerations that we need to explore with the legislature and with the State Board beyond December. And so we'll note those to really stay focused in our work together. Additionally, the graduation requirements, the Agency of Education is responsible for recommending to you as the State Board statewide graduation requirements. And we have developed a work plan that we've been sharing with the field to really get input on that approach. Would love to bring that forward to the State Board next month and so that you have an understanding of that roadmap. We are approaching that work as an opportunity to really set the standard of excellence for Vermont and are really excited to work with you. We will bring forward recommendations to you in December and are committed to continuing to collaborate with you on an ongoing basis. As you evaluate those recommendations, we can continue to engage with the field to review any questions or to think about some of the operational considerations of that large scope of work. So I'll just conclude by saying, you know, we're very excited about the academic year. We've been very busy at the agency getting ourselves positioned to best support in these key areas that have emerged as really critical for the field, and we are looking forward to sharing more information around the, the public engagement process as we roll out the finalization of this plan.
Thank you, Zoe.
Questions that anyone might have.
There was a, there was a lot in there.
We're doing a lot. But, you know, I often say it's all the right work. It's all the right work that we are focused on, and we're very much committed to doing this work in a meaningful way that is going to be impactful. And so that is really exciting place to be, and I think we all share those goals to doing the work well and in an informed way that is collaborative with the field. And we're really taking a results-based accountability focus, right? We're doing all of this work in service to improving opportunities for our students. And so what you can expect is really that as we're moving forward, we're being very clear and, and evaluating and measuring our progress so that we can make, make course corrections as needed in the effort of continuous improvement.
And to that, I would add, very strategic. It seems like you're being very strategic in how you were plotting this out and sort of figuring out how to bring about the most change in the most effective thoughtful manner. So I appreciate that. Brian?
Thanks, Jennifer. And thanks, Zoe. That's, that's a great report and very exciting. I'm particularly excited about work, the work you're doing on graduation requirements. And I'm wondering if you might just elaborate a little bit on, on the, on the approach overall, you know? I love when you said, we want to position Vermont to be, you know, top of the list, you know, best in the country. How are you approaching that?
Well, I'm happy to put our new Chief Academic Officer on the phone. We've been going on the road, actually, the last week to share that approach. So I'll allow her to walk through that, but we are, we really see this as an incredible opportunity to us. This is not about just submitting a report to you with like, here's what we think is required. That's not how we're approaching it. We're really approaching this as a vehicle to set the standard of excellence for Vermont and really thinking about the alignment around the whole system. And there's a lot of excitement and enthusiasm around this work. We've talked with superintendents and with many of our, all of our professional associations that really want to be engaged and supportive of this work. So I'll allow Erin to expand, but we have developed a multi-phase approach, which we think will get us to a very meaningful recommendation to you in December, and I'll allow her to expand on that.
Thank you. I am still getting the hang of teams. I believe I'll be able to share my screen. We're looking okay? Everybody can see it? Great. Okay. And let me see if I can put it in presentation mode, so it's just a little larger for, you know, on some of the board.
There you go.
Yep. Great. Okay, we're off to a good start. So there has been a lot of appetite for some updates about the plan for this. So just starting with a broad overview of what we intend to include in the report, this, of course, as you all know, is part of Section 9A of Act 73, requiring us to submit a report by the end of the calendar year with recommendations around the statewide graduation requirements. And there are some objectives that we are already thinking through in terms of what we hope to achieve with these recommendations. First, to set the standard of excellence for graduates throughout Vermont. Next, we know that currently there are some inconsistencies from one district to the next, one supervisory union to the next, in terms of what is required of a graduate across the state. And so this is an opportunity for us to promote equity and consistency of rigor. Next, we want to support the vertical alignment and integration from the pre-K through 12 system. So we're really thinking about this not just as the high school experiences they prepare to graduate, but also pulling that through line all the way down to their earliest educational experiences. We're going to be aligning to the Vermont portrait of a graduate. There are some updates we'll likely do as we revisit that. We want to make sure that we're thinking through ways to make measurable the different components of the portrait of a graduate, not just around, you know, academic assessments and standardized testing, those kinds of things. But, for example, I recently pulled an interesting report from Castle, which does a lot of social emotional. They're out of Yale, and they, they really lead the, the path around social emotional learning, and they're making some recommendations in this report about ways we might measure some of those kinds of characteristics in our students. And then lastly, that we're ensuring that our graduates are prepared for college and our career, their next steps, once they leave us after high school. So I'll highlight for you that we are anchoring to, we're thinking about this in terms of four different phases. So the first one, we're already in the midst of August and September, we're engaging in research and analysis like that Castle report that I just referenced. Our team in the academics area is already starting to dig into, you know, what foundational knowledge we need to be able to set that vision of excellence for our graduates. As we move into October and November, that's when we plan to engage in, with different stakeholders. I know that that phase is one that lots of folks are most eager to get to. So again, that window being October to November, when we're going to be prepared to do that. November and into December, we're going to be working on the actual report and recommendations so that we can submit that within a fairly aggressive timeline here. And then we're structuring this, thinking about a phase four essentially, because we know that we will be positioned to provide ongoing support to you all, the State Board, as you look over our recommendations and prepare to make final decisions. So we'll continue to engage with stakeholders, we'll continue to support you all, and really be thoughtful about how we can operationalize this and make the transition from the current system to a future state where there are statewide requirements. To get a little deeper into this, phase by phase, so phase one that we're already in, like I mentioned, is us doing the research and analysis necessary to establish a foundational knowledge base and set that vision for student success. We're beginning by reviewing the current Vermont requirements and looking at that through the lens of what outcomes that has produced as well. So not just noticing the variation from one district to the next, or supervisory union to the next across the state, but thinking about what that actually means for what the portrait of their graduates have been able to do. Similarly, we'll look outside of the state, that other state requirements and their outcomes. We're really wanting to center our recommendations around research on what students need to be future-ready. And so we're developing a framework for looking at other current examples of requirements for graduation, and that's going to help us make sure that we're thinking about the outcomes that it has, you know, produced in terms of, do certain requirements help with improvement of students having access to additional opportunities than they've had in the past? Also, things like, do the requirements align with the portrait of a graduate that we want here in Vermont? You know, our values are that we really think about whole child. And so we want to make sure that that is reflected in the requirements that we would be proposing. And then, of course, we'll synthesize these findings so that we're positioned to share them when we begin doing stakeholder engagement, and that is the next phase. October, November is when we'll start to do that stakeholder outreach. We'll begin by identifying the stakeholders, thinking deeply about who the different groups are that we would want to be sure to include in that outreach. We want to make sure that it is a broad and inclusive group. We're also going to be designing the feedback methods, so we're going to think deeply, once we've identified the stakeholders, about the best ways to get their input and feedback and engage with them. So obviously, surveys is one way to do it, focus groups. We're also weighing which things would be best suited to be in-person versus virtual so that we might increase engagement and access in that way. And then lastly, we need to make sure that we're being intentional about the way that we're collecting and organizing all of the feedback, the feedback and input, so that we're positioned to identify the recurring themes and suggestions as we move into the reporting phase. So phase three, reporting and recommendations, that's November through October, where we're drafting the report for you all. We'll analyze all the input that I mentioned us keeping organized in the last phase so that we can synthesize it easily. We'll draft the report and finalize it. Of course, we want to make sure that it's edited for clarity and accuracy, that it's representing the stakeholder feedback as well as our learnings from phase one in the research that we will have engaged in. And then that's what's going to position us for phase four, making sure that we're providing that ongoing support after we submit the recommendations, because we do anticipate that there's a great opportunity there to do another round of stakeholder engagement, just to elicit any additional concerns as we prepare to operationalize the shift and the transition, once you all have finalized your decision. So the intent of this overview is that it provides a pretty clear roadmap at a high level of the different phases, as well as the broad timelines for each. We are beginning at the AOE to assemble our working groups and assign roles and responsibilities for each part of this. As I mentioned, we have already engaged in some of the phase one activities, because we do need to hit the ground running. We're also converting this presentation into a memo so that we can share it, and it's easily accessible for folks to reference the information that I just walked us through.
You're getting a first peek at this. The memo will actually be distributed later this week to the field, and we've been able to meet with leadership of the professional associations, lovingly referred to as the Bs, to walk through this and get feedback. So we're very excited to get deeper into this work.
Thanks. I see Mohammed and Brian. I'm a little cognizant of the time as well. I don't want to, there's a lot here, but I do know that we've got our Teacher of the Year candidates who are logging on.
Yep, thank you. Hey, thank you, Erin, and welcome aboard. Thank you for the layout you just presented. I am, I'm not sure if I missed this, but it sounds like I didn't hear what I'm about to say. In regards to portrait of graduate, I'm curious and really would be very interested in seeing a tool that would progress monitor our students who would graduate. Per se, to clarify that piece, it's like currently we have students across Vermont who are in colleges somewhere and sometimes even out of state. How do we foresee or prepare ourselves to find or craft a tool that would monitor them, like track them, which is, I find, a tool that could confirm whether we actually prepare them for the end goal, which is career and becoming a global citizen? How do we measure that? I'm really curious about that.
And I think what you're getting at there is really how are we defining success? And what you're articulating is we need to understand what that means beyond graduation. And so that's part of the framework that Erin's helping us put together, that we'll bring forward to the board to think through more deeply. We do know that we can, through the National Clearinghouse, we can track persistence rate within post-secondary environments, but I think that's part of the work we're doing right now, and I'll allow Erin to expand. Your question is really very much aligned to how we're thinking, right? This is the opportunity to really be focused on what we mean by student success and ensuring that we're supporting that and measuring in a way that's going to help set students up for life after graduation. Erin, anything else you want to add to that?
I guess I would add, first of all, thank you for the question and the warm welcome that in addition to things like persistence rate, from the preliminary research that I've done so far, it doesn't look like anyone has created or standardized a framework or tool like this yet. And so I think that that's another opportunity for Vermont to really be at the forefront of innovation in education. I mean, the portrait of a graduate is something that is, has become fairly widely practiced across the country, but really thinking deeply about, like Zoe said, the measures of success and whether or not we're achieving that is, it appears to me so far to be an area that there has been less work on. And so for me, that's exciting. I really like innovation of this sort. I'm eager for I'm eager for thought partnership around that as we continue to refine how we might approach that component of this work.
Thank you.
Brian, and then Lyle?
Thank you, and yes, welcome, Erin. Very helpful. Great to have you with us. I'm wondering if you would consider, in that initial slide, you mentioned college and career readiness, and I think it sort of implies citizenship. But if you would think a little bit about putting that sort of, how do, are, do we create an active participant in this democracy? You know, that kind of language, just to throw it out there as you're all contemplating things. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Lyle?
You're on mute, Lyle.
Thank you. I was, all the advocacy is going to start right away. People are going to say, but we need this, we need that. So you're going to be very patient as people begin to do that, which is what I'm going to do right now, which is advocating to make sure that there continues to be access to career and technical education throughout this entire process. Because it's easy to have lots of expectations that then don't allow for what I'm reading in the portrait of a graduate to happen. So you don't need to comment on that, just throwing it out there because you'll hear me say it again. So thank you.
I would love to comment on that quickly if I can. I actually just had a meeting yesterday with Ruth, where she's already begun some outreach to other states about the ways that they, some colleagues of hers, about the ways that they have either successfully or not. And it sounds like so far not. This is another place of opportunity that in their graduation requirements have addressed the need to be inclusive of that. And so that is another area that we're being very proactive about making sure is included in ours.
Thank you.
And I did see a question around the availability of this slide deck. So we weren't planning to present it, but happy to. So glad we were able to bring that forward to you today. We will follow up and make sure you have the presentation and then the memo, which will be ready at the end of the week. You'll receive that as well.
All right. Well, thank you both. Great presentation. At this point, we are a little bit off schedule. We did have a 10-minute break scheduled. What I'd like to do, because again, I know that we do have our Teacher of the Year candidates waiting, let's just do a quick five-minute break, and then we'll be back at 10:50. All right. Turn my camera off and my microphone off. Well, I think you, Rich and I are the only ones back so far.
I can tell by the look on your face you want us back. Okay.
I'm here.
We've got Cynthia, we've got Tammy.
I'm here. Is it raining there?
It is.
Very exciting.
You know, it was amazing. Last week when we had the movers, it, which, you know, implicated me. It was like 90 degrees and it was just awful. And like this house has no fans. Didn't appreciate that. Certainly no air conditioning, but yeah, now it's like 57 degrees and raining.
That cold front rolled through on Sunday and it's like I could see it coming in from the north. And you get those cloud patterns that you only really see in the fall in Vermont because they come in from the north the way that it is. So I said to my daughter, I was like, well, there comes fall, right? And you know, within, what, an hour and a half, we dropped 25 degrees. It's like, yep, there we go. And if you look at the long range, there isn't, there isn't a lot of heat coming. It was like, that's funny, because you could actually see the cold front coming in from the north. I didn't just, Cynthia, you're in the, you're in the north. Could you see it as well? Like we-
I could.
Lyle, I literally sat on my hill and watched it come in and was teasing the blizzle. I'm like, there's fall. It's coming right there.
What I noticed is literally the house guests rolled out of the driveway, the breeze kicked in and the temperature dropped.
We need rain, though. It's like, oh, if I can see the rain, please send it this way.
No, I know. My well seems to be holding, but I'm worried. Like we, you know. It's right, I don't know, it's raining here in Plainfield. Is it raining where you are, Cynthia?
No.
Yeah. Tom, are you getting rain? It's drizzling. Chickens just ran inside. They're annoyed.
Y'all should move to southern Vermont.
Tom is one town over, so.
All right. Well, it looks like, yeah, I'm going to go ahead and bring us back. So next up, we have our Teacher of the Year presentations. And I know that we've got some of our candidates. I do want to say, I noted when Linda Alvarez popped on, I did a double take at the board agenda. And I'm sorry that we got your name wrong. You were listed as Lisa on the agenda, and I'm sorry about that. I didn't catch that earlier. So for the Teacher of the Year program, the mission is to promote the teaching profession and recognize educators who are modeling exemplary teaching practice in Vermont schools. The Vermont Teacher of the Year is an outstanding teacher who represents thousands of excellent educators in our state, demonstrating leadership to peers by defining quality and rigor and support by sharing collaborative professional knowledge. The Vermont Teacher of the Year serves as an advocate for the teaching profession, education, and students. This year, we have three finalists. We have Linda Alvarez, who is a business instructor at the Wyndham Regional Career Center; Erin Randall, a health teacher advisor to the Gender Sexuality Alliance and Coalition Community Service at the South Burlington High School; and Jason Raymond, the Digital Media Lab instructor at Burlington Technical Center. We are also joined by Andrew Proton, the agency, who has been organizing all of this. And just want to warmly welcome all of our candidates. This is truly an impressive accomplishment to have you here with us today and really appreciate you taking the time and also for submitting your materials in advance. That was a board member request last year. And it just helps board members sort of ground your presentation before we actually hear it. Board members, you also have your candidate sheets. And I think those need to be submitted to Suzanne. Is there a deadline, Suzanne? Or Andrew?
And Andrew can walk you through all those details.
Okay, perfect. All right. Well, then let me turn it over to Andrew without further ado.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and I wanted to start first by introducing myself. I'm Andrew Prouden. For those of you who do not know me, I'm the Assistant Director of our Ed Quality Division. So I oversee our licensing and educator preparation teams and within that, the Teacher of the Year program. I also just want to do a huge thank you for Katie Galliato, who is our coordinator and has done substantially more work than I have on this this year. So big thank you to Katie and her work on this. And then, yeah, I did want to apologize. We had, it looks like a game of telephone. So the agenda should read as Linda Alvarez as the third name. I wasn't sure if we wanted, if we could, wanted to adjust that or I guess parliamentary inquiry, if we needed to change the agenda or anything or just move forward on that. But yeah, so a quick background. So basically, for the Teacher of the Year, what we have is two different processes to allow folks to be eligible to apply. One, we are partnered with UVM's Outstanding Educator Award. Each fall, they have nominations from all districts and a number of heads of school for teachers to be recognized there. Outstanding educators are then automatically allowed to apply for the Teacher of the Year program when it opens up in the following spring. We also, a number of years ago, at the agency started a public nomination process, allows any individual in the state to nominate an educator. And so that has been a really great way to get additional folks to be able to apply for the program. This year, we saw very similar numbers to the last few years. It's been steady as far as number of nominations and applications and everything. We had a total of 16 applications submitted. And then we have former Teachers of the Year, who will review those applications with agency staff. And then we identified six folks to have interviews. And then from those interviews, we selected the final three today. Lyle, you'll be really excited to see that two of them are CTE teachers. We have Jason Raymond, as Chad had mentioned, from the Burlington Tech Center, who teaches media arts; Erin Randall from South Burlington High School, and who's a health educator; and Linda Alvarez, who teaches business at Wyndham Regional Career Center. So each candidate is going to have five minutes. I do ask that folks do try to keep an eye on the clock for self-pacing, but I will also, you know, raise my hand when there's 30 seconds left and give you a little nudge. Once we're at the five minutes, please ask for folks to be respectful. We won't cut your mic or anything like that. But please do try to stay within the five minutes. And then, yeah, for board members, there's the scoring sheet. We would like to be able to have a decision made by the end of the month. So if folks could share the score reports with Suzanne within the next week, that'd be really helpful for us to be able to work with Secretary Saunders to make that decision. And without further ado, are there any questions from the board members before I have Jason start?
I have a clarifying question, Mohammed. Thank you, Andrew. Where, I mean, by when do we need to fill out our form as board members and submit it?
Yeah, so I think if you could get it, let's say Wednesday, maybe by the end of next week at the latest, I think would be, or sorry, actually, I'm sorry, just looking at the calendar. Maybe at, let's say like Monday. So then Secretary Saunders and I can work together next week to make the decision by the 31st. That'd be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Well, Jason, if you feel ready, I can start the clock on my side. Again, I'll raise my hand when there's 30 seconds left and then we'll get going on to the next person.
Before I get started, can I just confirm everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I will press my start.
Awesome.
Picture: fireworks over Lake Champlain, reading: Vermont is pragmatic, John Dewey; creative, Hades Town; entrepreneurial, Ben and Jerry's; improvisational, Phish; socially responsible, Bernie Sanders; authentic and regional, Noah Khan. In 2018-2019, I worked on the Vermont Flexible Pathway Collaborative, a grant-funded statewide work group focused on providing a forum for stakeholders at middle and high school levels of education and industry professionals to consider the implications of the implementation of Act 77, Flexible Pathway. Personalized learning is difficult to collaboratively negotiate from different levels in the educational process. Middle and high school levels often create their own parallel systems and programming to develop their students' pathways. Each flooding community partners and local industries for student experiences and competing for limited resources. Within this model, technical education is often a field trip, an off-ramp, or an outlying culminating event for high school students with limited connection to any of the earlier steps that supported devising the personalized learning pathways. One solution is to reimagine the role of technical education. Instead of being a culminating event, technical education could be a regional, educational, economic hub, and the bridge that connects all stakeholders to facilitate regionally-specific experiences for students. Technical programs are the only programs in the current educational system that require community advisory boards. They have the potential to reinvigorate local businesses and colleges with collaborative, real-world, culture-building programs and a focus on connecting community stakeholders in their shared supportive student-centered experiences. From these sessions, I wanted to apply this learning to my own media arts program, the Digital Media Lab, and become the economic, educational hub I imagined. So I spent a couple of years reaching out to and with potential collaborators, area middle and high school teachers, local artists, CCV, UVM, Champlain College, and many others. And what I discovered was that no single collaborator was positioned to facilitate a collaborative model like a technical center. So I rolled up my sleeves and decided to create some of my own Big Ten collaborative models in the form of clubs, such as the Make Music Club, the Photo Club, the Film Club, the ALV Media Club, and the Film Society of Chittington County. To fund each of these clubs, I wrote and was awarded over $90,000 in grants. Funding helped to facilitate the experiences and integrate the collaborations with local, middle, and high schools, nonprofits, local artists, businesses, and producers, each serving as mentors and support to students. I purchased industry-level equipment to build professional-quality production capacity for my programs and to support local businesses and events with student-produced social media content, working for Battery Street Jeans, Fem Fest, Champlain Valley Fair, Burlington Juneteenth, and many others to build culture and ultimately create student-initiated small businesses in audio production, film, video, and photography, win them scholarships, and help students receive local recognition. My student Caleb Lodesh was voted Producer of the Year in Vermont by seven days as a 12th grader at BHS. My student Passian, a global-majority student from the Congo, started a small business with professional-level equipment that he purchased through work he produced while still in high school. He's now on a scholarship at Champlain and about to enter his senior year. My student Maya Voda, as a senior at BHS, was interviewed on Anderson Cooper and Good Morning America for her work on the issues of equal pay with BHS girls soccer team, producing a video that won regional awards and landed her an internship at HBO, production degree from SCAD, and current production work in LA. My program has been fortunate to have students perform at all major regional venues in Chittington County, produce and exhibit photography and art at BCA, win all the regional awards in Vermont for art, including the Vermont Presidential Scholar of the Arts in Photography, Film, Video, and Music, Scholastic Art Awards and the Congressional Art Award representing Vermont and DC. I see the effects these collaborative programs have had on the current and future students of DML, making it the largest technical center arts program in Vermont. I'm aware of time, too. I want to make sure I keep going here. I see the equally engaged middle school students in my Make Music Club arrive early to the technical center on city buses, dropping their bags in my room and racing to the production room to work with area high school and high school students and emerging producers and artists. Three hours later, they're still working, insisting on one more take, just another hour, all on a snowy, already Wednesday, late afternoon in January. Technical education is more than cookie cutter, one-size-fits-all programming for entry-level vocational needs. Technical education is the hub, the bridge, the connector between schools, community colleges, universities, businesses, industry, state, and local governments. Imagine: student-centered pathways with a community of stakeholders who are pragmatic, Digital Media Lab; creative, Caleb Lodesh; entrepreneurial, Passia Mibulecha; improvisational, Make Music Club; socially responsible, Maya Voda; authentic and regional, ALV Media Club. These are Vermont flexible pathways, and technical education is critical to their application, economic viability, and our shared future regional growth and success as districts and a state.
Perfect. Thank you, Jason. Great. And I think too, in years past, board members have asked some questions, but I'd recommend we have all present and then if there's time, we can have some there. Sorry, that was, I had a page break on my notes. Oh, forgot to say that. So after Jason, we have Erin Randall. Erin, are you ready? Can we do a mic test before we start your timer?
Certainly. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So whenever, whenever you're ready, I'll start and I'll put my hand raised up with 30 seconds left and we'll go from there. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Andrew. I'm ready. Good morning. My name is Erin Randall. I use she/her pronouns. For the past 26 years, I've had the privilege of teaching health education at South Burlington High School. I'm deeply grateful for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'd like to begin with a visualization. Imagine you're a teacher in a Vermont school. You walk into the bathroom, you hear a student crying, locked in a stall, feeling helpless, unable to ask for help. You pass another student, head down in the hallway, humiliated after being called a slur tied to their gender identity. Or perhaps you think of the student who hasn't been to class in weeks. Despite emails, phone calls, conversations with counselors, their anxiety has kept them from even walking through the school doors. These are not hypothetical situations. They are the daily reality in Vermont schools. Today, I want to lift the voices behind these experiences and share what we, as educators and leaders, can do to champion student mental health. This work aligns directly with Vermont's educational priorities. By prioritizing student well-being, we strengthen academic achievement, reduce absenteeism, and promote engagement. A healthy student is a student ready to learn, to grow, and to thrive. The Vermont Youth Risk Behavior Survey gives us a clear picture of the challenges students face. In 2023, 1/3 of Vermont students reported ongoing struggles with anxiety, depression, or stress. Self-harm and suicide planning remain at pandemic-era levels. 23% of students reported self-harming. 14% reported making a plan to end their life. Some groups are at even greater risk. Female students are nearly twice as likely as their male peers to report poor mental health and self-harming behaviors. LGBTQ plus students are disproportionately impacted, reporting rates of mental health struggles and suicidality two to three times higher than heterosexual cisgender peers. Students of color, students with disabilities, and students from low-income families face additional systemic stressors that further elevate risk. face additional systemic stressors that further elevate risk. These numbers are not just statistics. They represent students in our classrooms, our hallways, and our communities. The good news is that Vermont has already identified mental health as a central educational priority. In Building for the Future, Vermont's Plan for Education Recovery and Beyond, mental health and social-emotional learning stand as one of three pillars alongside academic success and student engagement. The Agency of Education's Health in All Policies education framework embeds mental and social-emotional well-being across systems, utilizing tools such as MTSS, small group interventions, and individualized supports. Vermont is leading with a whole-child approach, but our students are asking us to deepen that commitment. Drawing on my experience as a health educator, here are strategies that I use that can make a real difference. Integrating social-emotional learning. In my classes, students practice self-awareness, emotional regulation, and relationship skills. These not only strengthen well-being but also improve focus, problem-solving, and academic performance. Provide targeted support for high-risk students. Affinity spaces like my school's Gender Sexuality Alliance give students a place to belong. Share stories and advocate for inclusive policies. Representation and curriculum and classroom materials affirms that all students are valued. Adopt the whole-school, whole-community, whole-child model. This framework aligns perfectly with Vermont's priorities, emphasizing wellness across cognitive, physical, social, and emotional dimensions, and engaging families and community partners as essential supports. Normalize conversations about mental health. In my classroom, students practice advocacy skills, how to ask for help and how to support peers. Imagine a school culture where every student feels safe talking openly about mental health without stigma. That is a culture where belonging and resilience thrive. Every Vermont student deserves to feel seen, supported, and safe, not just academically but socially, emotionally, and physically. The data from the YRBS shows us that our students are not quietly struggling. They are calling out for help. And we as teachers, administrators, families, community members, we have the power to answer that call. Sometimes it takes just one caring teacher, one inclusive policy, or one SEL lesson to change the trajectory of a student's life. As we begin the 2025-2026 school year, let's ensure that student mental health is not just a topic in health class, but a shared foundation of Vermont education. Together, we prepare our students not only to succeed but to truly thrive. Thank you for this incredible opportunity.
Thanks so much, Erin. And then Linda, can we do a mic check for you? Is that?
Hi, good morning.
Hi, thank you. We can hear you great. So whenever you're ready, you can start and I'll start my timer.
Thanks, Andrew. So, good morning. I am Linda Alvarez, CTE Business Teacher in Brattleboro, Vermont. My business students at the Wyndham Regional Career Center come from many backgrounds, and they have different cultures, languages, goals, learning styles, and strengths. My job has been to bring them together in a way that values each of their voices. I want every student to feel like they belong and have something meaningful to contribute. My goal isn't just to teach business terms or guide students through a textbook. I want to help students learn how to learn, to develop curiosity, confidence, and a sense of ownership over their education. I believe teaching should light a fire. It should energize students and make them want to explore, try, create, and grow. Over my 21 years in education, the moments I've grown the most have come from stepping forward, not just as a teacher in the classroom, but as an advocate for my students in the community across the state and beyond. This journey has deeply shaped me as a lifelong learner and an equity-focused educator. This growth has not always been easy, but it has been essential and has strengthened my belief in the power of education to change lives when it's done with intention, care, and an unwavering commitment to equity. As I reflect on my role today, I feel more inspired than ever that CTE is very powerful. It gives students direction, confidence, and a sense of purpose. I am proud to be part of a statewide and local movement that ensures every student that can walk through our doors can see themselves in our classrooms and leave with the future they can believe in. I was asked to write a speech as part of this Teacher of the Year process, and I'd like to share a part of that with you now. It's called CTE: Teaching Towards Belonging, Purpose, and the Future They Choose. It's an incredible honor to stand here today as a career and technical education teacher, a community builder, and most importantly, someone who believes deeply and urgently that every student deserves to find their purpose through learning. And not just someday, but now, starting in kindergarten, because our students cannot wait. Today, I want to talk to you about equity, but not just in the sense of access, but in outcomes. And I want to talk about community, but not as the place that we teach, but as in something we build with our students every single day in our schools, in our neighborhoods, and across the state of Vermont. I teach business and entrepreneurship at the Wyndham Regional Career Center in southern Vermont, but my students come from different towns, cultures, and learning styles. And here's what they all have in common. They choose to be in my classroom. They've chosen CTE, and because of that choice, they show up with passion, with curiosity, with grit. And because they choose, they thrive. This is one of the most important things that CTE can teach us. When students feel that they have a sense of agency, when they see relevance, they know their work matters, they rise. So the question becomes, how do we build a system that doesn't wait until 10th grade to engage students, but calls to them early, welcomes them, and shows them a way forward? At the WRCC, we are really trying to build this system. My students and I are helping expand hand-on learning for younger grades, forming partnerships with elementary schools, and aligning our curriculums with our sending schools and inviting middle schoolers into our center. My students don't complete hypothetical assignments. They solve real-world problems, work on real projects, and meet people from real companies and organizations in our communities. My students lead center tours, host student informational sessions for prospective students. They build websites for nonprofits, design logos for our district organizations like CPAC and the Teacher Union. They survive as financial advisors at community events, and they speak on economic panels alongside CEOs and share their visions for Vermont's future. They even travel to Wall Street to experience firsthand the center of American business, and they do it because they've been given the space to find their voice. We also know that learning shouldn't end with a grade, and that's why in southern Vermont, we've partnered with the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation to connect our students with job shadows, internships, and career pathways. Our FBLA chapter sends students across the state and country to compete and learn. My students aren't just participating, they're taking the lead and they're doing it themselves. But access alone is not enough. Once students arrive, they must feel like they belong, and this means that we make sure that every student feels represented, supported, and able to see success as a real possibility. Because if students cannot see themselves in our spaces, they're not going to stay in our system. I'm proud to be part of Vermont's CTE Equity and Diversity Initiative. We are looking closely at data and asking tough questions, and most importantly, listening to students' families and to those who have not always felt like CTE was meant for them. And here's what's happening. Students are stepping into these spaces and they are shining. For the first time this year, every one of my students is pursuing a business pathway in college. Two of my new American students, who recently moved to Vermont in the last 18 months, have full scholarships to Champagne College, and they moved there yesterday. Others are starting businesses, entering the workforce, or enrolling in technical programs. These outcomes are not random, and they are the result of intentional work by educators, counselors, directors, and families, and community members. We're all working towards this common goal. I do not ask students what they want to do. I ask them what they want to become, and then I help them build a life that reflects that answer. And yet, I keep returning to this. We must start sooner, and we need to engage students with CTE, and we must reach every family. CTE is not a last resort. It's not a backup plan. It is a pathway that empowers all students to lead with their strengths, engage with the real world, and build futures rooted in relevance and purpose. Imagine if every child in middle school saw high school not as something to survive, but as a place to discover themselves, and that future is possible, and we're building it step by step at the WRCC. My hope is that together we can create a culture where students see school as a place of belonging, discovery, and purpose. So let's link to identity, build these bridges across grade levels, and connect our schools to our communities. Because when we help students see who they can become, they believe it, and when they believe it, they can achieve it. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Linda. So yeah, Chair Samson, I know in years past, folks have had some questions. If there's time, I'll leave it up to you if folks would like to, or if you'd like to move on to the next agenda item.
Any board members, if you have questions for the candidates or want to share any thoughts, I invite you to do so.
Just thank you all for everything you're doing.
Thanks, Lyle. Brian?
Yeah, I would echo that. All terrific presentations. Feel so lucky that you're all in the classroom. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you all for your time this morning, and as I mentioned, we'll hope to have this by the end of the month, and we'll reach out, and Katie and I will definitely be in touch with you if you see.
All right. Before you go, I see Mohammed has his hand raised and all. Mohammed, go.
Yeah, I want to extend my appreciation to you all and just really bring the sense of understanding. It's hard to pick one individual out of a million for all the hard work you all do on the field to support our students. So while we appreciate you, I just want to say, if you end up not being picked, please don't take it personal, and we just really, it's incredible that what you all do out there. But the unfortunate part is that only one of you gets to be picked. But please, let not that put you down. Let not that change your attitude about your ambition, your all the effort you bring in, day in, day out, your work. Thank you.
Thanks, Mohammed. Yeah, it's interesting listening to each one of your presentations, how very different they all are, but there's this underlying thread of just this deep commitment to your students', love of what you do, belief in, you know, the power of change. So really compelling messages. This, you know, for the board, this is not a bad problem to have, to have to, you know, pick one. But just really appreciate all of you being with us today, and thank you for your service to Vermont. All right, and thank you, Andrew, for organizing everything.
Okay.
Great. All right. Next, we have some independent school approvals. And again, I'm just going to provide a little bit of background on this. So pursuant to 16 VSA Section 16414, the State Board of Education is charged with adopting rules for the approval of independent schools. Approved independent schools apply for approval under guidelines identified in 16 VSA Section 166B and our State Board of Education rules that are in our Rule Series 2200, specifically Rules 2223 through 2228. The State Board of Education has the ultimate authority for independent school approval. However, the implementation of these regulations requires the agency to conduct reviews within the scope of oversight assigned by the educational statutory requirements and rules. So although the exact process varies depending on whether or not a school is a therapeutic independent school that limits enrollments to students that are on an IEP or a 504 plan, whether or not a school is accredited by a third-party organization that has been recognized by the State Board. Once the agency has performed its review, the school then comes before the Board's 2200 Approvals Committee, which is chaired by Tom and also joined by Lyle and Cynthia. So this past month, Lyle, Cynthia, and Tom met with agency representatives as well as representatives from the school, and they have put together their recommendations for the full board to consider the approval, reapproval applications. So Tom, with that, I will turn it over to you to walk us through each of the five schools.
Great, thank you, Jennifer. And we have three different kinds of schools. We have one that is ineligible to receive public funding, two that are therapeutic schools, and two that are accredited and eligible to receive public funding. And we'll deal with them in that order. We're going to recommend that all that all five of these receive approval for five years that will be ending in June 30, 2030. That's in line with the secretary's recommendation, and I'll be reading that as a motion at the end of each presentation. The first school is the Mount Mansfield Academy. It's an alpine ski racing school for grades six through 12 in Stowe. It's ineligible to receive public tuition. It is NIASC accredited. The school operates two models of education, one a traditional form of education that had 27 students in it, and then a five-week winter term that enrolled 35 students last year. Its curriculum is in line with the Common Core and Next Generation Science standards. They do offer some AP courses, and the school is especially proud of their AP seminar offering. They do a great job coordinating with the homeschool and any required assessments that the students in the five-week winter term need to complete for their homeschool. The Mount Mansfield Academy provides those assessments. Classes are small, six to 10 students with a heavy social-emotional learning component, and because of the small class sizes, extensive differentiation of instruction. The staff is qualified, the facilities are in good condition, and the school is financially sound. And so our committee would like to recommend, and I'll make this in the form of a motion, that the State Board of Education grants renewal of approval to Mount Mansfield Academy an ineligible independent school in Stowe, Vermont that serves students in grades six through 12. The renewal approval is for the full term of five years through June 30, 2030. This approval is conditional on the requirement that the school reports to the Agency of Education within five business days whenever any changes occur in enrollment, programs, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing, or administration during the approval period. I'll take any questions, or Lyle and Cynthia, if you'd like to add anymore.
Was that, that was a motion, Tom? Tom, are you? So let me second it, and then we can have discussion.
Great. Thank you.
All right, so there's been a motion, there's been a second discussion. Tammy?
No, I'm just seconding. I was channeling my inner Rich for keeping us, keeping us on process. I'm learning.
I was going to try to second it, Tabby, but you jumped in.
Okay, you can do the next one, I promise.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Tom or committee members or the school? There's been a motion, there's been a second.
Can I just ask a question real quick?
Sure.
Tom, this is obviously a school that is not applying, is not being considered for public tuition. I just, we have new board members. I just wanted to make sure that everybody is clear about that distinction and what your committee considers that's different between when you consider schools who are, might, who would like to be eligible for public tuition versus others aren't. I'm just wondering whether or not we need to have just a quick moment to make sure everybody's on the same page about that.
So the key distinction up before this legislative session was their ability to provide special education services to all students. And so that is, that's something our committee looks at, and now there is the additional requirement that 25% of the students need to be publicly funded in order to qualify for that. And so Mount Mansfield does not, is not seeking approval for public tuition.
Thanks, Tom. I just, and we're going to do sort of a list of these, and I thought you've got some new people on the board. Maybe we should just take a sec to make sure we're all on the same page about what those criteria are, particularly since one of the key criteria have changed.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any extensions? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. I'm going to just do the roll, or the, you know, show of hands and yea, nay. If it's not unanimous, then we can do a roll call, but as long as it's unanimous, I think we're good. So thank you. Tom, back to you.
Yes. The second school is, got a long name. We'll call it CHOICE, which is the acronym, but the school is changing our ideas concerning education. We'll call it CHOICE, which is the acronym, but the school is Changing Our Ideas Concerning Education Academy. So CHOICE for Changing Ideas Concerning Education. It is located in Berry. It's an approved therapeutic school under a designated agency, which is Washington County Mental Health. It serves students ages five through 22 in the STARS program and also students in grades five through 12. It's approved to serve 58 students. It had 38 at the time of the visit, 11 elementary, 12 middle school and 15 high school. All of them are on an IEP or a 504 plan and they're specifically approved for serious emotional disturbance and autism. The AOE team found that they had robust academics, very impressed with their academic offerings, very impressed with their embedded services. They have an embedded nurse, clinical treatment. The nurse has been responsible for extensive social emotional learning programming and health and wellness program, programming throughout the curriculum. They have excellent relationships with their families and support their families, extensive professional development with lots of resources for in-house and external training. They are very proud of their ability to grow their leadership and their faculty from within. Their facilities are in good condition and they are financially sound. They're a cost center for Washington County Mental Health. So I'll follow the same process. I'll like to make the motion then that the State Board of Education grants renewal of therapeutic independent school approval to Changing Our Ideas Concerning Education Academy, also known as CHOICE in Berry, Vermont, to serve middle and high school students in grades five through 12 and students aged five through 21 in the STARS program within CHOICE Academy. The renewal approval is for the full term of five years through June 30, 2030. This approval is conditioned on the requirement that the school reports to the Agency of Education within five business days whenever any changes occur in enrollment, programs, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing or administration during the approval period.
I'll second that motion if I could.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion? I will say I was struck reading the report and how thoughtful and thorough the school is, both in its, you know, care for the students, but also communication with LEAs, you know, and just being very conscientious about that. Any other questions or comments? Right. Hearing none. There's been a motion. There's been a second. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All right. All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any extensions? Okay, the motion is unanimous. Thank you. Tom, back to you.
The next school is East Meadow School. It's a, a school that is under the auspices of Northeast Family Institute or NFI. We have approved two other schools from NFI, a cornerstone and getting the Arlington School that are both in St. Johnsbury. It's an approved therapeutic school in Morrisville, serving students in grades K through 12. They had 24 students from a really large service region, reaches up to Newport, over to Fairfax, to St. Johnsbury, to La Mole. They draw from a long, a large area. They too have embedded clinical services and robust academics. The agency staff commented on the impressive, not only qualifications, but performance of the content area teachers they have on staff. They also have robust professional development using the experience of their incredible staff. They have strong family outreach as well, just like CHOICE did. Their facilities are in good condition and they are also financially sound. So I would like to make the following motion. That the State Board of Education grants renewal of approval to East Meadow School, a therapeutic independent school in Morrisville, Vermont. It serves students in grades K through 12, ages five to 22. The renewal approval is for the full term of five years through June 30, 2030. This approval is conditional on the requirement that the school reports to the Agency of Education within five business days whenever any changes occur in enrollment, programs, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing or administration during the approval period.
I'll second that.
Well, we'll, we'll go with Rich. I heard Rich. All right. There's been a motion. There's been a second. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any extensions? All right. The motion's unanimous. Thank you.
The next two schools are accredited schools. Both, they're each by different accrediting organization. They are eligible to receive public tuition. They are not therapeutic schools. The first one is Maple Street. It's NIASC accredited. It's eligible to receive public tuition. It has 25% of its student body from CHOICE towns. It serves students grades K through eight. It had 161 students that, when the visit happened. They have a licensed special educator. 30 students were receiving some level of special education services. In the NIASC letter, they praised the school for a number of things. The things that they wanted them to work on were a strategic plan. And so they do have a strategic plan that was designed in the spring of 2023, executed last year around literacy alignment, facilities expansion, which will, in a considerable facilities expansion, which will happen in April 2026, increased financial aid and increased professional development funds. Their facilities are beautiful and well cared for and they are in compliance with the new rules regarding special education. You'll notice in the report, this is something we'll see more of, that in, under the new rules, that the, the agency has been dealing with the backlog, used the desk audit for part of it and looked at the NIASC accreditation for another part and then has done a site visit regarding special education. And so you'll see this coming up more and more for these schools that are approved to receive public tuition and the agency is looking at their ability to deliver special education to all students. So I'd like to make the motion that the State Board of Education grants renewal of independent school approval to Maple Street School in Manchester Center, Vermont, to serve students in grades K through eight. The renewal approval is for the full term of five years through June 30, 2030. This approval is conditional on the requirement that the school reports to the Agency of Education within five business days whenever any changes occur in enrollment, programs, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing or administration during the approval period.
I'll second that motion.
All right. There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any extensions? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. The last school up for discussion today is the Village School of North Bennington, which is very much like other schools we'll see coming forward in that it's a model of like a town academy. It's accredited by AESNE and serves students in grades K through six with 136 students at the time of the visit. But 85% or more, it might even be 90%, there was not a, I didn't have a firm number of their students are publicly funded. They, they have a full-time licensed special educator. Out of the 136 students, they had 38 students on IEP or 504 plans and they do have an instructional support team that serves others who are not, do not have an official plan. They provide the full range of services. They contract out for some that they don't, can't provide in-house. As this kind of school where most of the students come from the local community and are publicly funded, there's a strong sense of community, a strong program of place-based education. They, their, their tuition is actually voted on by the town and they, what they were working on, what AESNE's letter said is for them to work on their strategic plan, which is a common thing that comes out of an accreditation visit and they, to staff, staff up in the area of advancement, of school advancement. So communication development, admissions, that area. So an interesting governance model, by the way, with, with some elected, publicly elected members, but an interesting governance model. Their, their facilities are also in good, in good shape and they are also financially stable. So I'd like to make the motion that the State Board of Education grants renewal of approval to the Village School of North Bennington, an eligible independent school in North Bennington, Vermont that serves students in grades K through six. The renewal approval is for the full term of five years through June 30, 2030. This approval is conditional on the requirement that the school reports to the Agency of Education within five business days whenever any changes occur in enrollment, programs, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing or administration during the approval period.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Any discussion? I'm curious, Tom, has it made a difference with the committee? With the new updates to the rules that allow sort of a streamlined process for schools that have been accredited? Certainly the packets are smaller.
So, yeah. Yes, it has. I have to say, when I first saw the condensed packet, I missed all the information that I used to get. But I like learning about schools, but it does streamline the process. It, it makes it a little more difficult to actually ask specific questions. We can ask the more general ones and we get good feedback from the agency staff. But, uh, yeah, it does make a difference.
So do you get a copy of the NIASC report or the AESNE report?
We don't. I ask, I asked for the letters. We don't get the full report and that would be, that would be much. But the, the, the letters that grant them accreditation are, are informative. And they, and that actually helped in the, in the talks with the schools that asked, we could ask more specific questions.
All right. Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 Please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any extensions? All right. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Do you have a sense of how many schools are coming up for the next approval committee meeting?
Well, I think looking at the, the documents for the next agenda item, we might get that answer, but I know we have at least one.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to jump ahead before we jump ahead. All right. Tammy?
Yeah. Hey, Tom, you know, the 25% criteria is a new criteria for students who are publicly funded. Are you, where are you getting those data from the agency? Or is the, or is the institute, or is the institution telling you how many they have?
So the institution told, we're getting it from the agency report, but I think the data came from the institution.
Okay. Cause I, and I think Zoe's off. I know there's been an effort to try to validate data coming out of these systems. So that's why I was just asking, like, we're sure we, you know, we're sure those numbers are right. So that if we're 24% or 26%, like, that gets really tricky. One of the things that worries me about that criteria is it's a threshold, right? So if we're off one student either way, that could create a challenge for us. So I'm just, I'm just curious. Since this is the first batch we've had to do, I just wondered how that was going.
The, the, the Maple Street School actually, I think, reported to us in our conversation that they were 30% publicly funded, but the agency found that they met the 25% threshold.
Got it.
So they're on the list, Tammy, which is, I mean, both of these schools are on the list, which is in the agenda packet.
No, I, I'm not saying that they're on the list. I was asking about the sources of data we're using to determine whether or not they're making that criteria and how, what, what information is Tom using and getting to make that determination? I didn't know if that was being provided by the school or if that's provided by the agency or if there's some validation process going back forth. And I remember that Zoe was telling us that the agency's been working hard to validate data. I was just curious like how that, how that's working, because this is the first batch we've had come through.
I see Zoe has her hand raised.
I think it's a great segue to the next agenda item, which is where we will be walking you through that process. So the agency has conducted an evaluation of eligibility based on the new criteria of Act 73. I think Chair Samuelson intends to provide a little bit more background around the, the details of that, so allow her to do that. But the first phase of that is to see if they meet the geographic criteria. And then of those that meet the geographic criteria, they also need to meet the threshold of 25% enrollment. So the Agency of Education worked with those schools that passed the geographic eligibility criteria to certify the data. That was our first focus because we needed to confirm the list of eligible independent schools. So as background, H454 turned into law on July 1 when eligibility took into effect. And so we have taken a staged approach as we're doing that data certification process with the first being looking at those that passed that geographic test. So 22 schools, 22 approved independent schools did not meet the geographic test. 12 of the schools, 12 schools did meet the geographic test and also met the 25% criteria. To answer your specific question around how we validated the data, we engaged in a certification process with the field and that was, this data is actually collected through two different collection methods. One is coming from the independent school and one is coming from the district. And so we engaged in a certification process where the independent school needed to verify their enrollment and the district needed to verify the public tuition. And that matching occurred to calculate the percentage of students that received public tuition to determine that eligibility criteria. And I do have Lori Donal on the call who will also expand on that process and can provide additional details for you upon the request of the board. Moving forward, we have reordered the review of independent schools according to those that meet the criteria. That was a request of the board to prioritize those. And so moving forward, as you get those batches, we're going to walk you through how we've done that prioritization based on those that are eligible and continue to meet the criteria.
Let's highlight that when Zoe talked about the certification process, we actually did two rounds of that so that when we had the final compilation, we sent it one more time just to make sure that everything on there was valid. And so we also gave you the numbers. So again, we had a first pass. Some of those schools did not meet eligibility. We had a second pass. There were additional schools that did not meet the new eligibility requirements. And so we looked at our upcoming schedule for, you know, pushing through that backlog for the upcoming school year and into fall 2026. And we do have four, I believe, four schools who, we had already completed the reviews. And so that they just need to be, you know, final vetting at the AOE and the schools before going to the board's committee. We were planning on still sending those in September because they're basically already complete. Additionally, we have the therapeutic schools on the list for the site visit for fall into spring into fall 2026. We're sticking on that schedule because as you know, therapeutic schools weren't impacted by this. And there were two schools that are on our list that are no longer eligible that are coming up. But the remaining 22 that are ineligible, we've pushed those to the end of the list, the schedule list. However, they're schools not needing site visits, as I understand. So they could be, they're accredited schools that could be plugged in throughout the process in between the more rigorous site review approvals. So as we kind of have time, fitting those in sooner might be a possibility. But we've prioritized based on those new eligibility requirements and/or the therapeutic schools who aren't applicable to the new criteria.
So I'm curious, how many total? So I'm curious, how many total outstanding schools are there, and have any dropped out since the, the list became finalized?
I don't know of any that dropped out based on the final published list. I think the list, list was published last week, if I remember correctly. And how many total, I would have to, how many total in the backlog?
Yeah.
I'd have to count those for you.
Okay, I think the last year was like 60 something. So, okay.
We can get, we can, we can kind of compile everything. I mean, the other thing we're also working on too is, at least with the finalists, we have compiled, I think we may have shared it, or we're planning to share it, the enrollment grade spans and how many students would be impacted on those schools that are not eligible anymore. So how many grandfathered students, aside from the ones that we, that may have been enrolled more recently, those, those would be add-ons. But you, you can kind of get an idea of how many students would be impacted from those, you know, now ineligible schools.
Okay. So it looks like, I'm looking at your document that was put in the agenda packet. It looks like there might be as many as eight for September. Greenwood, Two Roads, Laraway, Foundations, Sugarwood, Rutland Area, Christian, Mid-Vermont, Christian, and Pond Brook.
So Greenwood, I believe, is the one that Tom was referring to. They, they were ready for July, but representatives were out of the country, so they couldn't attend that meeting. So that one's definitely ready to go. The others need that final school vetting before we could put them on the September list. Yeah, so as soon as we get that, we will forward them along.
So the reports have been sent out, and they're sort of in that 30-day period to respond?
They're, they're about to be, hope.
Okay. Okay. Other comments or questions from board members? All right. Well, thank you. I think today was a good start. All right, so future meeting planning. Well, one thing is, in the past, the board has tried to meet in person in September and October. So next month, we, I would like us to be in person. I don't have any great ideas about where we would meet. So if anyone has any ideas, you can tell me now or email me by the end of the week, but we should probably get working on that sooner rather than later. So tentatively, we'll plan to be in person. And as a reminder, when we meet in person, we tend to convene around 11 o'clock, have a tour of the school, meet for lunch, and then have our board meeting starting around 12:30, 1:00 in the afternoon. So it ends up being a longer day with the, the board meeting actually in the afternoon. But I will keep you all updated as soon as I know what a plan is. If we don't come up with a plan, we'll revert to being virtual, and then we'll do kind of the same, starting at 8:30. To just, I guess for now, keep the whole day open, but I'll try to get that buttoned up as quickly as I can. As far as things on my list, we'll have another commission update, secretary report, committee updates. We should have good updates by that point, because I think both of our committees and advisory boards will be up and running. We'll have more independent school approvals. I also have, just based on our meeting today, a presentation from Zoe regarding different federal programs, flexibility allowed, agencies' roles, updates to the state ESSA plan. So Zoe, I can follow up with you on that. And then a deeper dive on special education. Should have something about Inspire. And then the other thing that I just penciled in, but I wasn't sure if this is a September or December thing, is the agency recommendations regarding the statewide graduation requirements.
We can certainly provide a standing update on that, because the work is underway. We laid out the framework. So happy to bring forward updates as we progress to getting a recommendation due in December.
Okay. Anything else that board members can think of?
I think, I think Zoe might have said that there's, there might be some waivers for us to consider.
Oh, right.
Likely.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, if there's nothing further, I will turn it to public to be heard. I see Martha VanderWolk.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, welcome.
Hi. I have a question about the small schools definition. There's no definition of a school. I'm on the Canaan School Board, and we think of ourselves as two separate schools, Canaan Elementary School and Canaan Memorial High School. But the state seems to define us as one school. Together, our two schools have about 135 or 140 students. If, if we're two schools, then each of them has fewer than 100 students. I imagine that there used to be a definition of a small school as class sizes of less than 20, which we definitely have. But we're a pre-K through 12, and I imagine that when the definition of under 100 students was come up with, people were thinking of a pre-K through five or pre-K through six. And so in terms of the small school grants, or whatever they're being called, which we used to always get, having the limit be 100 students but counting us as only one school rather than two puts us in a precarious financial situation. So we would like clarity on whether we are a small school or two small schools, and whether we qualify for the small school addition.
Thank you. So the committee is just, I don't know if you were here for the whole meeting.
That's actually something, I think that's something AOE has to answer, right? Because the definition of schools in statute.
Although we're, we're making recommendations, so that might be a recommendation that we might want to make.
No, she's asking about, right, yes, I made note of that, but also I think for current weighting, right, that's, that's a key consideration.
So, at least in terms of the state board event, that is something that the committee can take into consideration. Tammy, are you saying?
Yeah, no, I, our, yeah, our charge is with regard to by necessity. Right? The thresholds for what's small and sparse are, are in statute, right? And our charge is, is around necessity, right? The by necessity part, that was part of Torben's presentation.
Yeah.
You can certainly make recommendations for changing statute and changing the threshold, but the definition of a school and the definition of, and the cut points for what is small and what are sparser in statute. I think our charge is, is, I understand it, and as AOE just presented, was with respect to defining what constitutes by necessity.
So this is a, a, a good point that's raised, though, so I'm not sure who the appropriate entity would be to address it.
What, what I've heard is that there may have been, at one point, those two buildings were counted as different, as separate schools for the purposes of weighting, right, or the Small Schools Grant Award, which we used to have. And what I'm hearing is that perhaps there's been some change in how those two buildings are counted and as, whether or not they're counted as one school or counted as two schools. And that would be a question for the agency in terms of how they are implementing, right, the current funding formula.
So Zoe, is that something that I can have you follow up on?
I can follow up on that to confirm how they're being defined in statute and also through our ESSA plan from an accountability perspective as well.
Great, thank you. Was that why you had your hand raised, or?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thanks. All right, Elizabeth Burrows.
Thank you for letting me have a second bite at the public comment baffle. I, I also wanted to comment on the, the small schools, small by necessity question, and, and I would, I have been bringing this up wherever I can. I would ask that you consider possibly adding quality to, to one of the considerations. For example, a school that is small but surrounded by schools that are of a lesser quality than the small school is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Burrows, just to be, I'm just noting your comment. Can I, are you, is your, is the point that you're making is that they would like the subcommittee to consider whether or not quality should be part of the definition of by necessity? I just wanted, I just want to be clear what your request is. Okay, thanks.
Yes. For example, not necessarily the school in the district where I live, but in our area, there is a school that is very, very small, but it is also surrounded by school, it is a high-quality school, and it's surrounded by schools that are of a lower quality. And so should that school be able to continue as a small school is, is a, a consideration that I think is, is really important to take, take into account. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'm not seeing anyone. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Rich.
Rich, I'll second it.
Seconded by Cynthia. All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great afternoon.